...of the City Commission meeting for October 2, 2013. Would you please all stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go ahead then and open this up to, we've got our period of time where we're going to have an update on our Oregon City Sewer Master Plan prior to going to Citizen Comments.
All right, well, thank you Commissioners for taking the time to put this very important topic on your agenda.
Yes.
We're eager to learn, we're eager that you're, we're happy that you're here to listen to.
You're happy we're eager.
You're happy and eager.
I'm really happy that this audience came to listen to this topic.
I appreciate all you guys coming to hear this.
I told Jim Hansen, who's going to present this, that I'm pretty sure everybody in the audience is here to listen to this topic.
I think so. I think you're right.
So, this is about the sanitary sewer master plan update. This is not about storm water. We've got a separated system here in Oregon City, so it's important for you to know the difference, and this is sanitary sewer. We have contracted with Brown and Caldwell for $240,000 to complete our sanitary sewer master plan, and they're well underway with that work. The last master plan we did was in 2003, and so this is a 10-year update. And the last plan focused pretty heavily on pump stations and upgrades to pump stations, which we've since completed, and now this master plan update has focused a little less on pump stations and a little more on the collection system itself. So Jim's going to go into the details of that. I just wanted to introduce Jim. He's with Brown and Caldwell. He's well-known in the industry for completing sanitary sewer master plans. He's an expert in capacity management and maintenance programs for sanitary sewer collection systems. Also Eric Orgren is in the audience. He's the project manager for this project and has done an outstanding job of kind of taking the baton. I started with Brown and Caldwell last year with some flow monitoring, and Eric and Jim kind of take that and moved it down the road into a master plan. So Jim, if you could proceed with the...
Okay. Well, John, thank you very much.
Just hold on a second there. Nancy, is there a reason why it's not on the screen?
Just too much to do.
It's on our screen.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got a couple pictures on the right. These are not of Oregon City, sanitary sewer overflow and a major sinkhole. These are some things we want to avoid with our master plan update.
You can put some bad pictures up there for Oregon City, too.
So, on the agenda for this, we're touch on the existing conditions. We'll give you a brief overview of what goes into master planning, and then an update on where we are in the process and what some of the next steps are. So, existing condition, again, these are some sewers that are in distress, and these are not of Oregon City. The collection system is about 148 miles of sanitary sewer. The storm sewer is a separate system. That includes some footage of the west sewers, because the Claxton County west sewers are the interceptors that you discharge into, and there's about 10 miles of that included in 148. The Ranger pipe is approximately about 2-inch to 48-inch. Some of those larger 48-inch pipes, again, belong to west. Generally speaking, the largest pipes in the city are 24 and maybe a little bit of 30-inch pipe. Over 3,300 manholes, 14 pump stations, and they're shown on the map. Six miles of force main. Force main are the pipes that the pump stations discharge into, their pressure lines, and about 9,500 connections. These are your residential, commercial, and industrial connections that discharge into the sanitary sewer. So that makes up your collection system. An important aspect of the collection system is the age, and fortunately for the city, if you look at the graph, a lot of the sewers have been built since 1960. So those are relatively new sewers. Those are sewers that are in better shape, less leaky. But you still have about seven miles of sewers that are about 75 years old or older. Older, some of those are 100 years or so. These are pipes that can have structural problems, operational problems. We'll talk about INI, which is inflow infiltration, and you'll see that in those pipes and some newer pipes as well. So it's important to note that you've got some older pipes in the system that will someday need some attention. As John indicated, we did some flow monitoring the winter of 2012. The flow monitoring helps us understand how much base flow you have in the system and how much flow you receive from INI, and helps us calibrate the model so we can make it more accurate for projection purposes. We also have some great information from the city's pump stations. The SCADA system, which is its electronic means of measuring data and sending data to an operational center, has a lot of data on flow that we use to help calibrate the model.
Could I just ask a brief question? The first slide you showed us, they show more pipes than your second one. So the second one's where you've done the monitoring of the flows, is that...
Sorry, this one compared to the previous one?
Yeah. The previous one, you had some additional pipes you don't see here. Are these ones that you monitored?
It may have been just because we pulled a different map for that in terms of representing it. I'll talk a little bit more about what we included in the model as well in our follow-on slides. Let's see, I think I missed something. So we have the sewer flows. I mentioned that, flow monitoring and the pump station data, and that helps us move into developing of the master plan. So I'll go over some of the steps in that. So in the model, we build a model of the collection system. We do not build every pipe that you have in the collection system into that model. It's completely unnecessary. If you could see this, the red pipes represent some of the smaller pipes that are in the system. The green pipes that are shown here are the pipes that are in the model. Again, it's not necessary to do every pipe, because many of these small pipes will never need to be increased in size. Other information that goes into the model is the diameter of the pipe, that's very important, what the pipe is made of in terms of material, concrete, PVC, cast iron, other material. We need to know where the pipes are relative to the ground, so how deep they are, what the elevation of those pipes are. Helps us understand how much flow they can handle, and we've built most of the pump stations into the model. It's very important we understand how those pump stations operate and if they're undersized as well. So all of this goes into an electronic model. The next step after we build the model is to look at the sewer flows that we have to add to the model to test to see whether the system can handle that or not. So I just wanted to touch on sewer flows are basically made up of the base sanitary flow. This is what you get in your collection system when you turn on the tap or if you flush the toilet, and I'd like to point out it represents a very small portion of the total flow that you ultimately see. The greater contribution to your sewer is from INI, inflow and infiltration, and the amount of inflow and infiltration that you can get into the collection system can be anywhere from two to 30 times the amount of flow that you have in base flow. So when we're looking at collection system management, we're looking at having to handle both the base flow and the inflow and infiltration components.
Now, just if you could take a minute, I think I know the difference, but inflow and infiltration, just take a moment to describe them.
That is my next slide.
Okay, very good.
So inflow and infiltration, again, this is the greatest component that you have in the collection system. Inflow. Inflow is what we call like a direct connection to the sanitary sewer. Roof drain connections. Throughout the whole northwest, for many years, we connected our roof drains directly to the sanitary sewers. You can get inflow from cleanouts that are not capped properly. You can get inflow from manholes that have faulty covers, so when it rains and the water puddles in the street, it enters into the manhole directly. Another not uncommon occurrence is when you have a cross connection. So maybe the sanitary sewer or maybe a storm inlet rather than tied to the storm sewer where it belongs, it's tied into the sanitary sewer. Not uncommon. Infiltration is another large component of INI, and this is a little bit slower in that it doesn't react as quickly to a storm, but when the groundwater rises and water in the, it finds its way into your foundation drains that may be connected to the laterals that connect to the sanitary sewer, and all sorts of faulty service laterals connecting to the house, broken pipe, cracks in the pipe, deteriorated manhole, these all contribute to INI. INI is a difficult thing to reduce. Any questions on the INI? We build that into the model. Now, I show this slide. This is from flow monitoring from January 2012 of one of the 12 meters that we put into the collection system. So what this is showing, rainfall at the top, and you can see it was different peaks in the rainfall, and here's the flow before the rainfall. So once it started to rain, this particular monitor where it was located started to react, actually quite significantly, to the rain event. Throughout the system, with the meters that we put in last year, your INI contributions, or let me put it differently, your wet weather to dry weather ratios range from 7 to 27. Those are very large numbers. The recommended number, more acceptable number is about four, so you've got a significant amount of INI in your collection system.
Does that have to do with the terrain?
Pardon me?
Does that have anything to do with the terrain?
It can. Low areas are particularly prone. Sewers located along streams notorious for getting more INI. It can do with the age of the system, the amount of defects in the system, construction practices, they all...
I see you've got a big one going along Singer Creek, kind of, and...
Pipes along creeks are notorious for that. Design storm. John, you want to touch on this?
Well, just real quickly, we're talking Brown and Caldwell right now about which kind of design storm we should consider modeling, and we're going to look at both a five-year and a 10-year. DEQ requires us to look at the five-year, but they're scrutinizing that decision across the state of Oregon. In other states, they look at a larger storm event, so a 10-year event, and you know, what I think, and our philosophy should be, a lot of the pipes that are going to be undersized are going to be in tough-to-work-in areas, so to model that and to design a pipeline replacement project based on a smaller storm is probably not the standard that we want to meet. We'd rather meet a little bit larger standard. So we are looking pretty closely at both storms and looking at how the differences relate in terms of the capital program, but just so you know, we're looking closer at that 10-year event than probably the five-year event.
Okay. Thank you. The other part of the modeling is we need to look at both the existing conditions, what is currently out there, how's it developed, and then how do those flows get into the system. It's based largely on land use. And then we look into the future. What will the city look at like in 20 years under a full build-out condition? We look at the zoning, and an important aspect of this is we look at those properties that are going to be brought into the city, those properties that are inside the UGB but not yet in the city. So significantly for the city are South End, Beaver Creek area, and Park Place. These are new areas that will be brought in. We'll have to extend sewers out into those areas. So I want to touch on some findings to date and what our next steps are. This will just take a minute. We've done some initial modeling, and this is very early in the modeling, but we've definitely identified a number of sewers that are undersized according to a five-year event so far. Particularly, some of the older sewers in the system are undersized. These also happen to be in your downtown area. Again, these are some initial results. These are not the final ones, but we are seeing some challenges. Our next steps are, we're right on the cusp of wrapping up the modeling. We'll run it for the existing conditions, then the future conditions. This information will help us understand what is undersized today, and that'll directly impact your rates as you move forward. The future condition, that'll help us understand where things will become undersized into the future, and that'll have an impact on your system development charges. We'll identify what those capital costs are to satisfy both of these conditions and roll that into a CIP. The next step will be to identify those future improvements that are needed to be put in place so that you can service those new areas that are going to be brought into the system. And then finally, it's just a matter of pulling it all together and putting it into a user-friendly master plan that can be used by, you know, both city staff and the development Any questions?
I have one. When you're doing your modeling, at what points do you check that against actual flows to see how good your modeling is when you've affected changes?
Good question. Prior to us running the model, we do a lot of calibration, and what we do with that is we go in and we enter the flows that we have, and we tie those back to known data points, and we have our flow monitoring information. And we have certain storms that we saw during the flow monitoring time period. Well, we run those storms back through our model to see if we can reproduce that distribution, and we basically have already done that activity, and we've got a very good fit between model results and the results that we saw from the flow monitoring. So we have a high degree of confidence in that information.
And you look at that again after, say, you've made changes in the system?
What typically would happen is that, you know, as you go down the road, five years, 10 years from now, you would revisit that and do further calibration on the model. You won't need to do that immediately. It wouldn't have that great of an impact on it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Some of the other things you might think about, just real quickly, is some of the projects that will be identified will be pipe, you know, replacement projects, larger diameter pipes, but, you know, many cities, and I think Oregon City is one of those, that needs to have a program to reduce flows in basins that are extremely wet. So there's rehab, rehabilitation projects that are often require some new policies, because often you look at not only replacing the main line, sometimes you look at replacing the laterals that serve those, because what you find is if all you do is fix the main lines, the water table moves up, and really, often your leaks are in those laterals that were built to probably lessen public standards when they were built by a plumber for each house connection, for instance. So we wouldn't expect much of that in the stuff that's, you know, 40 years and newer, but some of the older stuff, we would expect a lot of problems with that. So as we move into this, some of the recommendations will be for more money spent on INI rehab programs and maybe new policies in regards to how we deal with private laterals, so...
The photos that I show here are of some efforts that you could do to further find out where you have INI. This is called smoke testing, where they introduce smoke into the sewer, and in this case, you can see you have smoke coming out at places you wouldn't think.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
All right, well, again, thank you for...
Well, I have a question, for John mainly, but the CPI that you're working on will go into the master plan. Is it like an addition to what we currently have, or like where does this go?
The CPI.
CIP?
CIP, sorry. I wrote it down, CIP.
I should have caught that. No, there'll be a new capital improvement plan...
Okay.
...that will develop out of this, that will be different than what was in the last master plan. A lot of what we completed over the last 10 years, you know, we completed, there may be new projects or different projects than from what we had in the last capital improvement plan.
Okay.
So it'll be a fresh look at what we should be doing.
Yes, and I know that we have water pipes that need to be replaced and all that, but I just want to be careful about spending the money.
I agree. That's an important factor. What we see in the wetter winters is problematic as well. So there's a balance between sewer overflows and capital expenditures, what we're seeing at the treatment plant versus, you know, what we should be seeing at the treatment plant. So the idea would be to focus on those areas that are the wettest, that 27 times our base flow, we probably want to target those areas. So, you know, we may need to do more flow monitoring, you know, but we'll do our best to identify which those are and come up with a replacement program that we can afford.
Okay. Thank you.
You're getting a lot of infiltration, good infiltration information from our last week.
All right, right, yeah. Yeah, no, I suspect if we were lifting manholes, we'd find some real high flows.
I'm not, we're, okay, now it's going on. We've been having some problems here. Commissioner Rock?
My question is, have we done any thing in our planning or building division about mitigation, so instead of people connecting their downspouts and things to sanitary sewer system, they're going into holding ponds, or you know, whatever you do? And how much does that, how effective is that in an area like Oregon City where you've got so much rock it's going to go right on through anyway?
Well, right now, the building codes prohibit a connection of downspouts to the sanitary sewer collection system.
And how long has that been in effect?
Well, this city has, at one time was a combined system, and more recently, they've, I would say within the last 25 years, they've separated those sewers.
Okay.
So we have a lot of homes that are, you know, we're pretty certain their roof drains are connected. One of the challenges that we have is that they don't, we may not even have stormwater facilities in those areas, so how to manage that's always a challenge. And sometimes you find you spend a lot of money on trying to reduce the flows, and then you have, you know, upset customers because there's no place for the stormwater to go either. So we do have to think about kind of a holistic approach to how to deal with this. Do we allow some of that to continue to flow through the sewer system, or is it our intent to try and catch every drop of water and keep it in the storm system as opposed to the sanitary system? And that's a balancing act that we're going to have to figure out as we proceed.
Do you know anything about how effective those other, I'm forgetting what they're called?
Well, if we can infiltrate, if we can infiltrate, they're fairly effective, and in fact, if they're, you know, if we can get it to bedrock, usually it's a good thing, because then it tends to follow that strata between bedrock and whatever's above it. But the problem we have with a lot of our areas is we've got clay soils, and infiltration is just not a good option for Oregon City. So it's, you know, it's just another constraint that we'll have to continue to work within.
Okay, thank you.
We've got another question. This is several years ago. Tri-Cities actually did smoke tests on the sewer systems in my neighborhood, and smoke was coming out of a lot of, a lot of the drain pipes and everything else, or some smoke actually was coming out from people's roofs, which appeared that apparently some old, some old stuff was opened up and so on. But I never heard an effort to get out in the community much in terms of trying to disconnect those storm pipes, and many of them had yards in which they could be directed. Anything much come from that effort?
Some of that information was well before my time here, and I think some of it was, you know, overwhelming. I know when they were downtown, there was just, you know, it was coming out everywhere, like it was on fire.
Yes.
So, you know, but I would say over the years, through our capital improvement programs where we've replaced pipelines, we've been able to take care of many of those. In other areas where we haven't had a chance to kind of build a capital program, like I said, most of our focus has been on pump stations and getting our pump stations to keep from overflowing and, you know, so our effort has been on pump stations. You'll see a renewed effort on pipes here hopefully soon.
Any more questions? Okay, hearing none, back to the agenda. This will be the time for Citizens Comments for items not on the agenda. I have Tom Guile and Bob LaSalle, please come up again. These are items not on the agenda. Three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for letting us speak this evening. My name is Bob LaSalle, and I live in Oregon City. Just a quick little update on the status of Park Place. We were in somewhat of a situation of strife a few years ago. We're well past that now, and we're working with a spirit of cooperation, unity, and forging ahead.
Yay.
Trying our best to get the community involved more than they have been, and so we are doing it first for Park Place, and I'll let, this gentleman to my left here, he's a little bit nervous because he hasn't addressed you very many times.
Those nerves can get to you. He does look nervous.
He's the salesman, he'll give them all the details.
It has been a while.
But based on my experience, you're limited to three minutes.
He doesn't get two from...
Good news takes shorter time than complaints.
Ah, there you go.
Anyway, we actually wanted to tell you about this event. After Bob got elected, I gave him a few ideas, and we talked about it, and with our new vice chair, and one of those ideas was to start throwing events in our community. If you can't get people, no matter how many newsletters or no matter what you do, then why don't you try to get them a different way? So we came up with the idea of having this Harvest and Halloween Bazaar at the Red Community Building in our neighborhood on Saturday, October 12. So the idea is, I put all these information out on Craigslist, got all these vendors, so I have Sensi, Avon, people who do Halloween costumes and other things. We even promoted the fact that it's a good time to divide your plants, collect your seeds, and do an exchange or sale. So the whole idea of this, as for us, I organized that part of it. I've got it on Channel 8, Channel 2, on their events calendar, Craigslist. We're getting a lot of input from vendors, and the idea is that for Bob to stand at the front door...
All that time?
All that time, and be putting it in their hand about the meeting coming up in a week.
Oh, I love it. That's the price.
So if we can get them there with interest, anywhere along Holcomb or anywhere throughout Oregon City, and give Bob the opportunity to invite them into our meeting and say, "Get grandfathered in, come to the next meeting to find out what we're going to do the next time." This first time we do it, it may not be big, it may be just so-so, because it's a new item.
Right.
But it takes a while for those things to grow, but we hope that if we show some sales activity and other people talk about it, we might do something in the spring as well, and again, attract more people to our meetings and get more of our community involved. So Bob's been to the PTA, I believe he's going to the churches. We've gone everywhere we can think of, and we're going to continue to promote it through television events calendars as well as Craigslist, and who knows, maybe it's something that will work for us.
Yeah, it's really good.
Hey, I've been going around to the various neighborhood associations to try to steal ideas from them. And so one idea that I'm stealing, we're going to have at our next meeting, is a few little light snacks.
Yeah, yeah. Get them food and they work out.
Thank you, that's great news.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work up there.
Have a good evening.
James Nacida and John Ludlow.
We do not give dignitaries a higher priority.
Who says I'm a dignitary? I'm not that. My name is John Ludlow.
Well, no, he's first. Did you hear the word?
Good try.
Be quiet.
Mr. Mayor, before I begin, I have a graphic, a projection, and I'm going to have to figure out how to get a...
Well, then, we better get Nancy up there.
Nancy will come and do it.
Well, assuming I have the right slide, but this cable seems to be interfering.
Maybe John checked over.
Yes.
Sorry.
And we'll all be busy watching Jim. So...
No pressure.
We'll do it from there, right?
Yeah. Something positive's happening. Your device is ready to use.
Okay, let's see if I can do this in three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here today, oh, I'd like to project this. Yeah. I want to talk tonight about a building that I find fascinating within the Blue Heron Mill site. This is the Mill C, also known as the digester. And when I moved to Oregon City and started walking on the promenade, I always was fascinated why a building that looked like a grain silo from Kansas was popped in the middle of this mill site. Well, I've learned recently that it's because it has origins as a grain silo. Here is a picture from 1855 with the original flour mill and a flume over to the grain silo. I don't know how well you can see this, as he gave me the pointer. In the 1882 sandbar maps, it's identified as such as a grain elevator, and it underwent various additions, reconstructions over the years. This is the entry from Mr. Kramer's study for the National Register eligibility determination in the 50s after reconstructions. It's up here.
Excuse me, Jim, if you use the mouse, we can see.
Yeah, that's better.
Here it is, right here. Kind of disappears when I, but it's right here.
It's still there.
That's the grain silo-looking digester building, and it was included in the National Register nomination form, and here's the letter of... And here's the letter of determination of eligibility where ES is significant, eligible and significant. And there's both the sulfite plant and the digester building listed as significant. So I think it's fascinating, it's a fascinating building. Here's my concern, we have our brochures filled of Willamette Falls Heritage Project. In it, there are, although there are 15 buildings that have been determined significant and eligible for the National Register, this one only lists five of them, the digester building not being one of them. I'd like to make a few requests. One, if this gets reprinted, I'd like to, I think it would be good, because SHPO is an unbiased authority on what is significant, that we should list all of the buildings that have been determined to be significant in our brochures. I'm also hoping that at some point we can have some sort of forum or educational seminar on these buildings, tell their stories, why are they significant, and what might be done with them. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ludlow. Chair, oh, excuse me, Chair.
Hold the button here. Hello, my name is John Ludlow, I'm Clagmas County Chair, and I want to say hello to you. I'm, this is my area of outreach, which extends through Canby, Lathe Hill area outside of Wilsonville, Wilsonville, Molalla Prairie, it's quite spread out, but nothing like Commissioner Jim Bernard's because he's got the majority of the big one. But I'm here tonight just to listen and it's, I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be out in the audience instead of up there. I mean, I really came here, Doug, to find out how commission meetings are really hard. I need a little restructuring, but you're the guy. Real briefly, you know, it was interesting to see the groundwater infiltration. I met with the Director of West yesterday and we were talking about, and when I was mayor too, we were always dealing with groundwater infiltration and how to, how to come about with a fix for that. But grouding alone does not cover it. And we talked about the groundwater infiltration for the Tri-Cities area. Where evidently of the three cities, some cities have more groundwater infiltration than others, and we hope that we can come to terms with that, of course, with the leadership in those three cities, not mandated certainly by the county. We, as most people know, the county sells or processes the sewer at a wholesale rate and then you have to pass it on to your customers. But there's an evening out of the rates throughout the county, as you well know. We're looking forward to hopefully planning for the future and that will be coming out very soon from West, their, their plan for the future. And it looks like we've got it pretty much dialed in. And I'm sure they've shared a great deal of that with you. On another note, the Blue Heron site, having toured that and many of you, all of you have, I'm sure, but I don't know if Jim was talking about this particular building, but I walk in this building and there's some, the clear vertical grain, huge giant beams and those little window panes up above, all I could think of is McMinimum.
That wasn't Jim's building.
That wasn't the building? Well, then I don't care about it, you know. But anyway, that's, that particular building just looked really good to me. So I don't know, you know, I'm anxiously awaiting the process more than anything. On another note, you know, as far as, as a public ownership down there, Metro, and I've certainly talked with Carletta, I'm very proud of the work she's done in partnership with you of that. But I, one of my concerns is, is spending public money down there. It's just me, now this is my whole thing, not my commission. But you know, there is a way through, certainly, and I've been active in planning for a long, long time, 35, 40 years, there's a way certainly to, to incorporate as a requirement that the owner or owners take care of access to the public on the Riverway without Metro spending huge amounts of money on that. I know they want to be partners in this and they certainly have some money, we all know, but they're not willing to let it go very often. But I, I do think that there's a way, when this is processed through the city, that possibly, that we could, that you could let the developer know that he, he or she needs to, they need to provide for public access rather than throwing a ton of public money on it. I'm very sensitive about that, as I'm sure you are. But it's a long ways in front of us, I well know that, but I'm real excited about the Blue Heron project. I'm also really pleased with the meetings that Mayor Neely and David Fraser have been at with me. And I'm happy to say that our next luncheon, I'll bring along the county administrator, which evidently you met at a Rotary meeting, but you stole my thunder on that. We have developed a new relationship, and I'm very proud of that, with the city of Oregon City, our home city. And I want to continue on that. I've certainly met with Betty and Carol before on other issues, including that one which I won't talk about.
Yeah.
The public's going, what is this about? I think my three minutes is up, by the way, so.
Yes, it is. A big red sign up there.
No, is it? Reset. Containing me to three minutes is tough. Any questions from the commissioners?
Oh, no, except that David and I appreciate your outreach to us and we've had some very good meetings and they've been frank and we're gonna have some franker ones.
Oh, yeah. Some things on your agenda we do want to talk about, thank you.
And who did you bring with you?
Oh, my wife, Maureen.
You're lovely.
She's always there with me.
Yeah.
Mr. Gifford.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, my name is William Gifford and I live in Oregon City. And to continue with the, after that hiatus of, of Chair Ludlow's, with a neighborhood theme, I, I had a few things to report. One is that the CIC did have a booth at the, at the Safety Fair, which I think was.
Yes, that was wonderful.
Well received and staffed by a lot of volunteers and I was, I was happy that, happy that they did that. Also, last night was the Hillendale Quarterly Neighborhood Association meeting, the Hillendale Neighborhood Association Quarterly Meeting. And there are new officers elected that we'll be notifying the city recorder of, but the Chair was reelected, Steve Anderson. The Vice Chair is, is a new member by the name of Roy Harris. And the Secretary of Treasury will be Joyce Gifford. So, so we have new officers. And I also had, had to say that we had quite an informative meeting. We had a couple of land use issues to discuss. We, in addition to the elections, we had our bylaws reviewed and it was a busy meeting, but at the beginning of the meeting, Tony Conkle came and gave the group a very, very informative, concise update on the Legacy Project. And it was very well received. And while he was there, there, there was another opportunity for another group that was promoting a land use issue to the group. And I had specifically asked Mr. Conkle if he was going to make some comments about that, and he said no. And I was so proud of him for staying at arm's distance from that process. I mean, they had already had their discussions, their pre-application talks. But I just have to say that I'm very proud of Tony's stance in that, in that issue and the fact that he is so, and I don't mean this in a negative way, black and white. And the fact that he sees things objectively, he's not one side or the other, that he does see, and I think, it's a fine line to walk. I think it's a very fine line to walk and I think he does a fine line, fine job of walking the fine line. So that's the news from Lake Wobegon.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I think we're coming to an easy topic. The Water, Water Park and Public Works Facility Heritage Tree nomination. Oh, adoption of the agenda first, my apologies. Any, anything, anybody wants to pull? We do have a change, incidentally, so I'll let Nancy, let me, let me Nancy speak to the change.
Okay. There's just one change to the application for the Ala Menthi liquor license. They are not applying for a full on-premises license, but for a catering license. So we uploaded the correct application on the consent agenda. Everything else is the same, it's just that they marked the wrong box on the application. And so it doesn't necessarily need to be pulled from the consent agenda, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
I'd like to pull 7F.
7F is being pulled.
Just for public input or public information.
Okay, very good. And with that, would we pass the consent agenda with the pulling of 7F? We don't have to take a vote on that, I presume?
No.
Okay. So we'll go on.
You'll vote on 7F separately.
Right. With that, we'll go on to the, into the Waterboard, Waterboard Park and Public Works Facility Heritage Tree nomination. We'll begin first with the staff before, before we go to public comment.
Thank you. Mayor, evening, Commissioners. At our last meeting, the Commission made a request that the application for designation of all eligible trees within Waterboard Park and on the Public Works Facility be brought forward for discussion and a vote. And so, a little bit of background, back in July of 2012, the Natural Resource Committee had rev, had reviewed the application. They'd actually heard the application, went out to the site, held another hearing, heard the application again, made their decision, recommended approval of the, the application request. During that time period, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee also reviewed the application and they did make a recommendation that, for approval of the trees within Waterboard Park. They didn't take a position on the property for public works. The Commission had directed staff that once the Natural Resource Committee had made a decision, that staff would bring that back to the Commission in a work session. We did bring that to you in a work session and at the end of that work session, the direction to staff was to take, go back to the Natural Resource Committee and work on the code. And there were some other discussions, but that was the main consensus out of that. There were other discussions about what's gonna happen with the Public Works Facility, where you were at in that process of looking for other locations, but the, the main direction for staff was go work on the code and, and come back. Staff has been working with the Natural Resource Committee. It's like we've had approximately six meetings where we've directly worked on code, another three that were, updates were provided since that direction. So tonight, we've put in, in front of you the information that was provided before concerning questions that you may want to consider with this, with this Heritage Tree nomination. And we broke it out into, into really two separate discussions. One was Waterboard Park and the second one was the Upper Yard at the Public Works Facility. And so in reviewing that, the code states that after considering the staff report and any testimony by interested persons, the city commission shall vote on the recommendation. So that's what hopefully you're gonna be able to do tonight. And so I think it's important to note that, you know, the NRC did look at this, they are recommending approval. Staff does have some concerns. I think we've tried to lay those out in the staff report in terms of, do you have enough information here to make a decision? Is there an understanding of what's being designated? It's approximately, if the entire design, it's approximately 23 acres. The entirety of the application provided that because of the historical significance of the area, all trees of eligible species and eligible size within Waterboard Park and the adjacent lots that the city owns, namely tax lots 200, 300, and 500, should be protected as a grove. And so when we walked through the application and we looked at the, the three, there's four approval criteria. The tree or grove is of landmark importance to the city of Oregon City due its age, size, species, horticultural quality, or historic importance. Or it's listed on a state heritage tree, is designated by the State Division of Forest Resources. Or it is a rare species, provides a habitat for rare species of plants, animals, or birds. So you need to demonstrate that it met one of those. And that the trees are not irreplausibly damaged, diseased, hazardous, or unsafe, or the applicant is willing to have the tree treated by an arborist and the treatment will alleviate the damaged, diseased, or hazard. So based on the information that staff had, we were, we were uncomfortable with the recommendation of approval. We felt that there wasn't enough information provided to justify it. There was no identification of which trees, how many trees, what condition they're in, what size they are, what species they are. So that was the reason for, for our recommendation. Now, this is not a, this is not a land use application. So you have quite a bit of discretion here in how you proceed. You can nominate the whole thing, all 23 acres as requested. I think that, you know, you represent the city, these are city-owned properties, you can split it up. But I think, you know, another question for you is, and I think this is where staff interpreted that an applicant, it's the applicant responsibility to come in and provide the justification for the nomination. The other side of that is that someone can come in and make an application and the onus is on staff to justify and document what the request is. We took the position that it's the first one. It's not staff's, we weren't gonna do a tree inventory of that, of the park. And so that's one thing that you need to consider when, when you're, when you're making your decision tonight. Once again, I think you have a lot of flexibility. I understand the request, I understand why folks, you know, why they wants to do that. I think it's important to point out that Waterboard Park is a charter park, it is the highest protection that can be provided, a publicly owned property in the city. There are various specific uses that can be allowed and prohibited uses that require a vote of the people to do anything. And at our last work session, we had some discussions about what are we trying to do? The Heritage Tree Code was to try and identify a tree of significant relevance, of this important tree that we want to point out and say, this is, this is something we want to acknowledge and we want to, we want to protect. And then some of the discussion was, do you do that when, if you've got a tree that's covered in ivy? Do you nominate that tree or do you clean the ivy off and then say, this is the specimen tree and it's natural condition, this is what we want it to look like? And so those were some of the conversations that we had last time about, you know, when do we, when do we make this designation? What, what should we be considering? What are we really trying to accomplish? And then a little bit of that discussion was also about, you know, a tree designation, designating a tree or a grove of trees or a group of trees versus habitat protection. And, and I think that was some of the reason why this was sent back to the Natural Resource Committee because we felt that there was a little bit of an overlap going on, that we were getting into a situation where the Heritage Tree Designation was being used in the context of habitat protection on a larger scale. And was that really the intent? And so that's just, it's another thing you need to consider tonight on how you want to apply this code. I don't, I don't think there's a, you know, I think that, like I said, you have a lot of flexibility on what you do here and how you make that decision. We'll certainly try and help you answer any questions that you have. We really did focus on the four criteria and what they say. And I really do, based on the information that we had, it was very, very difficult to make positive findings. And if, the Natural Resource Committee actually brought that up of, it'd be great if the applicant submitted additional information to give supporting evidence of why this is historically significant, or it meets one of these. But they felt in general, in the larger scheme, it, it could meet it. And they felt it did meet it, but they would have liked to seen a little bit more. And so that's where I think some of the difference comes in. On a second issue, you know, my staff has been, been accused of trying to circumvent and extinguish and prevent the Heritage Grove application that you're hearing tonight. There was a public records request and we referenced this specific application because it's the only one we've had. And we've had two requests for public trees. The one on this property that you're reviewing tonight and another one that was in response to a request to remove a tree. And as staff who was part of writing this, it was, it wasn't what it was intended for. It seemed like the, especially with the walnut, it was in, it was to try and stop someone from taking out a hazardous tree and, you know, and we're trying to address that through the rewrite in the Natural Resource Committee and revising the code. But I also think that it's the job of myself and my staff that when we do, when we identify discrepancies, and you have one here, you have, you have a, two conflicting codes. You have a land use process where you've gone in and you've made decisions and you have a Heritage Tree Code that, that works outside of that land use realm, but potentially do, will, do conflict. And we believe, even though, I, I agree, we put language in there, the Natural Resource Committee looked at it and removed it, but this is also gonna go to the Planning Commission and ultimately to the City Commission. You, you get to make the final decision. I don't, I can't change ordinances. You need to change, you change the ordinance. But this is a policy decision and you are the end, the final policy decision maker. And when we identify a conflict, we think it's important that you understand what those implications are. And we could take the Public Works reference out and we could put in the Cove, or we could put in the Carnegie Building, where you've made a land use decision, or you could make a land use decision. And then a Heritage Tree nomination could come in after the fact that directly that directly conflicts with the decision you've just made, and which one, which ones prevails. So we're trying to avoid a situation where that occurs. And the straightforward way to do that is to say, if you've approved a land use application on the property, we're not going to accept a heritage tree nomination. If you come in before, and we do a heritage tree nomination, we need to work within that. But to come in after the fact on a land use decision, it creates a conflict, and there's got to be some way to resolve it. And that's what we're trying to do. And we're going to continue to try to do that. And we're not hiding it. It's going to be discussed publicly at the Planning Commission, it's going to be discussed publicly at the City Commission. And it'll be your call in the end, on what you want that ordinance to say and how we process it. So I just, I felt I did need to respond to that, that, you know, we're just trying to identify conflicts within your code and trying to avoid them. And I think that's what you're, what you'd want us to do. And so, with that, I'd be, oh, I'm sorry. So Mr. Archer had something to add as well.
Commissioners, just a little bit of reiterating what Tony already said, but I think it probably is important to hear from me about this, that just speaking to the Waterboard Park portion of this discussion is, the, mostly related to the criteria D, and Tony already touched on this a little bit, is that I wanted to make sure that it was very clear to the commission that if we, if you do proceed in designating Waterboard Park, that potentially this, that could be interpreted that we've accepted the responsibility to perform the things listed in that criteria, which may mean doing the full tree inventory and determining, you know, diseased or hazardous trees. And that, as you, as you well know, our resources are constrained. We don't have the staff time to do this, we'd have to do this. And again, this, I'm saying this may be our responsibility. I'm not actually certain, but it could, the point could be made that we would be responsible to do that. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that, and that that's a bit of a concern on my part, that we might be committing ourselves to something that budgetarily, we're not anticipating doing at the current time. You know, our circumstances might change down the road as we explore different park funding opportunities and things like that that we've already discussed, but that doesn't, that's not our reality right now, and this could be a bit of an expensive undertaking. And I think that Waterboard Park is, has a very high level of protection of the resources that we have there. It's very clear in the Charter, Chapter 10, that the park is protected. The vegetation is specifically called out, that that's protected, except for some very specific circumstances of maintenance or hazard, or what have you. So, you know, again, I think Tony said it well, but I just wanted to make sure that that point was real clear, that I'm not certain whether we're going to assume a responsibility to do something to the effect of, and it's 19 acres approximately is what we'd be inheriting the responsibility to possibly do a full assessment of an inventory, an assessment of the number of trees, the type, and the condition of basically every tree in the park, according to the way that that reads to me.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Would it be harder to remove a tree that maybe is posing an immediate hazard to people? People walk up and down in that area if it was a heritage grove?
No.
I don't, I don't, not, I'm not sure, I don't, maybe, maybe our attorney has something to say, but in my understanding of our Charter, it already is pretty clear about that we cannot remove something unless it's presenting, I think it even says like a clear danger or something to that effect. So whether it's, does it, does the heritage designation put more constriction on it?
Yeah, with the three different processes.
I can't answer that question, I really don't know. We don't have an experience with this yet. None of our parks or open spaces have had this designation placed on it, so I don't know exactly what that would mean to us.
That would probably be good to know, because it's a different process.
I would think that our Charter would.
We have, right here, we have.
Having gone and compared it, my expectation would be that the Charter provision would provide a greater level of protection. Here's what I can tell you about hazards. This is from the Charter. It says, "Regulation and maintenance recognizes beauty in natural growth. It is a policy to reduce dangers, but to make, it is a policy of the city to reduce dangers but to maintain beauty. It is not the policy nor purpose of this section to allow one group of citizens to impose its standards of beauty on others. To protect the public health and safety, the commission has power to require property owners to remove trash, rubbish." So, it, it, you know, here's a, approval by voter is what it requires to do. You can't do the following without approval, you can't change its status, construct buildings, or clear vegetation in natural park, except for the construction of trails and essential roads, and elimination of hazards constituting a clear and present danger to the public. Who determines a clear and present danger would be this, this commission. The protections on trees under the heritage tree grove says, "No heritage tree may be removed, topped, or otherwise altered unless permitted by this section. An application to remove shall demonstrate that the burden imposed on the property owner of the tree is located within public right-of-way, and the burden imposed on the city by the continued presence of the tree outweighs the public benefit by, provided by the tree. For purposes of making this determination, the following tree impacts shall not be considered unreasonable burdens on the property owner or for the city. View obstruction, routine pruning, leaf raking, and other maintenance activities. Infrastructure impacts or tree hazards that can be controlled or avoided." Let's see, "Unless the tree is permitted to be removed due to poor health or hazard pursuant to 12.08042," which I don't have here, and I can track that. So there is a section that talks about hazard. Let's see if it made it into the code update. So the, but, you know, the basic thrust of it is that both allow hazards, the removal of trees for hazards, the maintenance one, I'm sorry, the Charter Park provision requires a determination of clear and present danger. And that's what, let's see if, and this version of the code doesn't have a 12.08042.
Mine doesn't either.
Yeah. So I don't know if that was updated later, or what happened. So, I don't know if I can answer your question tonight, is the simple answer. Let me, I'm going to do a little more digging while the public is, comments are going on, and if I find something, I'll chime in at that point, but.
I've got a query on the Charter. First of all, in this Charter, specific parks are pulled out by name in this Charter. Eventually, we're going to go through a Charter review that gives a more definitive definition in terms of parks, not specifically by name, but I think all parks created by ordinance are protected. Is that not true?
As, that, when you create a park, you can designate it as a natural park, and that subjects it to a higher level of protection. If you don't so designate it, it still has some, some level of protection, because the natural parks have a, you know, even higher protection.
And is, and is, within the ordinance, now, within the Charter, Waterboard Park is specified as a natural, Eric?
Yes. The language of the Charter specifically calls out Waterboard Park and says, this is a natural park.
And our ordinance just has to be clear for any new parks that come forward.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is the land use application current? Is it still in effect on the Public Works site?
We did a master plan, and I believe that there, I have to go back and stick with the timeline, the horizon on that was.
I think it's expired.
I thought it was, because there were multiple phases to it.
So we're, in that case, we wouldn't be in a land use application status?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure that's necessarily applicable to the application.
Well, it does come into this thing, yeah.
And I guess the one thing I would also just to finish up is that, you know, we do appreciate the work that the Natural Resource Committee has done. They've had multiple meetings, not only on this application, but also in trying to rewrite the heritage code to be more precise and descriptive in what it was trying to accomplish, and how that would occur, and what the process would be. So, you know, I think they've, they've made some significant improvements to what we have here. And so I just do want to acknowledge that we, you know, the work has been ongoing, they've put a lot of effort into it, and a lot of thought into it. And so hopefully that is reflected in what does come forward.
Apparently my memory's failing me. I thought we had approved two trees as heritage trees, one at the Ainsworth House, is that correct? I don't think that came up. So we've had two trees.
We've done two on private property, so those were brought in by the private property.
Yeah, and then we had one rejection on public property.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay. Are there any other questions before I open up to public comment, then we'll come back and have our discussion among ourselves? Any other questions?
I'll wait till.
Okay. So we're going to go to public comment, and as soon as I get on the floor, and I'll call them in order, I will be calling somebody else who I think sent an email out, but that'll come after these, these four, and I don't see that on there. Paula Blackwell and Jesse Busch, is that correct? Names?
Jesse Busch is correct.
Yes, come forward, please, in the order, Paula Blackwell and Jesse Busch.
For health reasons, I walk twice a day along the bluff from my house on South Center Street at the end of John Adams and up to the Waterboard Park. Along the bluff, there are very few places to pause for shade for the sun or shelter from the rain. The white oaks along the bluff provide such a space. They are very beautiful, and they smell amazing. As an artist, they are of constant inspiration to me and an ongoing subject of my work. It is my hope that they are protected and allowed to continue to live and exist as part of a heritage grove. That said, as a concerned neighbor and citizen of Oregon City, I am well aware that the Waterboard Park is a slide area and a potential hazard to its citizens as well as its city employees. I'm concerned as to the logic of ignoring this fact and pushing forward with the Oregon City Public Works master plan, and why we should support investing in such a risky endeavor. For example, at the corner of South Second and South Center Street, a sign is posted, weight limit 13 tons. I made mention of this to John Lewis of Public Works, as I noticed Public Works trucks passing by my house exceeded the 13-ton weight limit. I was told that they had researched the origin of the sign, and nothing could be found. In the spring of 2012, the wall next to this sign collapsed, taking out the narrow strip of road in front of my house. This road is the passageway to the Public Works upper yard. Not only does the weight of several Public Works trucks exceed the posted limit, but the master plan calls for an additional 127 employee and overflow parking spaces, as well as 20 additional spaces just for large trucks. I believe with this kind of traffic constantly passing in and out, that it is only a matter of time that the road will collapse again and/or more frequently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Busch.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Jesse Busch, I'm here in Oregon City. My house is between Second and Third on Washington, so about a block away from the Public Works site. I realize the application relates to the entire Waterboard Park area and the Public Works, but I'm going to confine my comments just to the Public Works, but I realize we're not here to talk about any land use designation. The reason I want to talk about the Public Works site is because I understand that the park proper is protected already. Those protections, of course, want to extend to the Public Works site. So I just want to point out a few things regarding that site, and first and foremost, that is the abundance of Oregon white oak there that are, I don't know how old they are, but obviously, they've been there a while, and they're quite abundant. I haven't had a chance to look into any other cities other than the City of Portland, but the City of Portland has a similar heritage tree designation. And I'm sorry, am I going to get a three-minute timer?
That was still a moment before you, your timer didn't get started.
Thank you. Okay, so, and I'll try not to step on any toes here, Bill or Jim, since I'm going first. But the City of Portland has 290 trees designated in its heritage tree program, and those are governed by a very similar standard. Namely, the ordinance specifies that heritage trees in Portland are those that are regarded as being of special importance to the city because of their age, size, type, historical association, or horticultural value. You'll notice by looking at Section 12, I'm sorry, Chapter 12, in Oregon City's ordinance, that we have very similar designation. I wasn't aware until a few minutes ago, unless I'm misunderstanding, it sounds like we only have two trees in Oregon City. Both are on private land. There's, I commend you, and I don't have copies to distribute, but I commend you to the City of Portland's 2013 60-page report on the heritage tree program, which has maps and lists details about every species of tree that have been designated. But of those 100 and, I'm sorry, 290 trees currently alive, there are 120 species there, so there's a lot of biodiversity. But 24 of those, nearly a tenth, are Oregon white oak, and that shows some significance there for surrounding communities as well. And it certainly shows why Oregon City chose to list the Oregon white oak as only one of five species that are per se designated as significant. So, I'd like to thank Mr. John Lewis for what I understand is a proposed revision to what I assume will be a revised submitted land use application for an expanded Public Works facility. As I understand that, it would provide for protection for most, if not all, of the established Oregon white oaks in the Public Works facility, which would mean that there'd be no potential conflict between designating these trees as heritage trees and any potential expansion there. So the two should not be viewed as mutually exclusive, they can certainly coexist together. And I would also like to mention that in Oregon's, I'm sorry, in Portland's 60-page report on their heritage trees, they claim to be the only city in the Northwest that has a program for heritage trees with legal teeth. And I'd like to bring Oregon City up to a point where it can challenge that, and certainly with numbers of trees as well. Their program's been enforced since 1994. I'm not sure how long theirs has been enforced.
It's recent, within this commission.
Yeah. Very recent.
I'd also like to point out in my remaining 18 seconds that you do have discretion to limit the application. I think it's very broad. There are already protections in Waterboard Park, but if you like, you can narrow that down to one tree, or as many as 10 trees, or even more than that. Portland has done that, in fact, on several occasions, they've nominated 10, eight, five groves of trees all at once in a one application. Thank you.
And we would be able to do that as well. There's not a limitation in that sense.
That I understand it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a note here. Jim Nacita felt that he or Bill Daniels' applicant should have come up first. I don't know if that's quite true in our situation, but it's also moot, because the next people coming up are James Nacita and Bill Daniels.
It was just two weeks ago.
James Nacita's first.
We've had a choreography built in here. We are representing the Neighborhood Association, so if we run a little over the timeline, I'd appreciate that. I was, as you know, the original.
Right, that's fine.
The motion was made at our McLaughlin Neighborhood Meeting nearly two years ago now. Another month, and it'll be two years ago, that we asked to have this considered as a heritage grove. And I, and I moved that we submit that application, and as you're aware, and I won't take up a lot of your time, that there's a timeline that's been put together on the succession of events that have happened through this process. And again, it's, in my mind, there are other significant trees in this grove other than white oaks. We have Madrones, which are dying out in this part of Oregon, quite common in the southern part. We have, we have some cedar up there as well, and we also have some wonderful maples, I'm sure, native to this area. So it isn't just the white oak, but certainly they are one of the reasons why we decided we'd take action and try to get those preserved. As you're aware, Public Works has used a portion of that land for different reasons to access on a daily basis. to access on a daily basis. And that compaction has led to a lot of the demise of, of the plant material up there. We're hoping that, that they are successful in finding another location. But in the meantime, time is of the essence. We can lose more plant material, including the white oaks, if we're not careful about how we move forward on this process. Thank you.
Mr. Nocida.
I'm, I'm concerned that the gentleman at Kinko's today copied the back of my pages. So let's see. If I could get a delay, Mr. Mayor, in my time, whether, well, that's why it's good to bring paper backups. It's often, sometimes take time to like download the PDF page by page, or is this an error?
It's a document that you sent me.
Okay. Well, sorry about that. Then I'll ask folks to return, refer to the paper copies. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, don't want to repeat what we said last week. I want to focus on a couple of updates to what we discussed at your last meeting. And the first thing I want to do is direct folks' attention to Exhibit F, because I think that's the very good news about our conversation tonight. And I too want to thank Public Works Director John Lewis for what I think is a real practical and solutions-oriented approach to dealing with the public and public concerns. There is a sequence, Exhibit F, there are, there's a series of three pages on here. The first one is Mr. Lewis's revised site master plan. What I've done is outlined in black what are, is basically the area of most of, if not almost all, maybe 98% of the eligible tree population for the heritage grove is within these black lines. As you can see in, on the second page, which is the topographic survey with all the trees. Now, in the staff report, there is a specific listing of trees of eligible size, and most of them fall within these black lines. So essentially, if you adopt a heritage grove within Waterboard Park, what this shows is there's not a conflict. It's, it's, it's quite remarkable and, and it's, it's good news. The third page is the, the build-out for Phase Four of the past land use plan, which shows why people were concerned because many significant and sensitive features, including on the first page where it says retain null, that rock outcropping of basalt with the white oaks bursting out of it is just, it's, it's really magnificent. And it really defines Oregon City, both in the basalt and in the white oaks. Those are, those are natural resources, both of those, that really define us as a community as far as our natural resources. Under the original plan, that was all going to get destroyed. It was all going to be cleared. That is heritage. That is our heritage. That is why the Heritage Grove ordinance is applicable to this. So that's what I'd like to point out is that there really, as far as a heritage grove, there's really, there's really not a conflict. And I think you can do both if ultimately, you know, there is an attempt to develop this, which, you know, is still up in the air because the city's searching for a new site. I don't want to belabor the point. I do think the materials that I've added regarding the change in the ordinance are concerning. I think there was language inserted here that would have prevented this, preventing you from hearing this application. The Natural Resources Committee removed it, and yet, three months after that happened, we still have evidence that there was a discussion of figuring out ways to prevent this application from ever being heard. I've made a Public Records Act request. I will pursue it. I've been asked to pay $300 in a deposit in order to get public records. I don't think that's correct. I think the public interest waiver of the search fee applies in this case, and I will continue to request that. And I would again request, and just to qualify my statement here, the Public Records Act request is obviously just mine. It's not endorsed or in any way associated with the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. But I think it is important that we recognize that there was some concerning things going on with this and that we should have some transparency and disclosure and try to get to figuring out what happened in this, in this instance. But again, I think I would like to say to follow the good news in this tonight and, and realize that we can, you know, we can, we can make it work. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. Janine Offit and Brian Boyce. Brian Boyce is the person I would have called forward, but he's, he's already put his name on the list.
Hi, I'm Janine Offit from Oregon City. And I've been reading on the Metro website, they're saying that they're really trying to reverse the dramatic decline of white oaks in the Willamette Valley. And because white oaks have become so rare, they consider it a high priority to maintain and enhance white oak habitat. They say that when oak trees thrive, so do the plants and animals that depend on them for food and shelter, and that trees provide habitat for hundreds of species. And that, I think in itself, is enough reason to maintain the grove. But in addition, I too am quite a walker. I'm up in Waterboard Park a lot, and it's obvious that it's a geologically unstable area. And I think staving any and all trees there will help knit together the soil and the rocks and keep it more stable because it's a continually shifting area. And lastly, I'd like to suggest if there is an approval of a heritage grove, that it be named after Bill Daniels for all his tireless work and to honor him for all that he does in our community.
You.
Thanks.
Mr. Boyce.
I'm Brian Boyce, Chair of the Natural Resources Committee for the city. And we forwarded this application quite a while, ways back. And we had been, in our developing this, we had been instructed by Tony to ignore the whole thing about it being Public Works property, which is what we did. It was pretty rare in our discussions, and it's not really anything to do with criteria for this decision. And, you know, if the council chooses to make that part of the decision, that's another story. But as far as the code for the natural heritage tree nomination, it's, there's nothing about that, of course, potential land use or anything like that. We recognized in analyzing the forest there that the current laws about the actual code are completely inadequate, requiring that the trees be 20 feet or closer to be considered what they call grove. We've gotten rid of the grove word, by the way, in the rewrite. But it does turn out that the trees around, or at least sections of the trees around Public Works property, all those small oaks that are partially dwarfed by the poor soil there, they are averaged out around 20 feet. Of course, it varies from tree to tree. But in a natural forest here, 20 feet would mean there was no groves. You know? We've rewritten it. That hasn't been adopted yet, but based it on a little more scientific approach where it's based on coverage, canopy coverage. Forest is defined in scientific terms as 80% or better coverage, and that's the requirement that we wrote in the current revision. You know, we could have gone with woodland that has quite a bit less coverage, but we felt that we're looking at what happens here naturally. Trees get big, you know? And that brings up another point. Those aren't, those are Oregon white oak, and we've heard plenty of tents familiar about that, but they're in a scabland area that has dwarfed them somewhat, which is the rarest type of Oregon white oak woodland. And it's because the soil is thin and they're on a basalt rock outcrop, there's very little to nourish in there. It's not as extreme as over in the Camasi Natural Area across the river, but it's definitely heading in that direction. It's probably the only area like that that Oregon City has. And so, but I did see a good sketch by John Lewis showing how they could preserve all those oaks in there and still build up there. And of course, whether it gets sited there or on another property is a separate discussion here. So, but we, we felt that we'd send this up to you folks so you could sort it out because it's a complicated issue. It really, really is. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, though, you, I, and I don't remember if the email was sent to me or other people, but did I read an email that you talked about Waterboard Park? You're talking about, I think you used the term rare species, that you flagged, I think, maiden hair fern in the area. And was that meant for this discussion?
I should mention that that occurred, that was just 10 days ago or so that I discovered that. But there's a, it's not actually a maiden hair, it just vaguely looks like one, but it's a, its habitat is leaf litter in between the boulders of landslides. And that's where it's growing, one plant. And it's only been, you could count the locations in the Portland area where it's been found on fingers of one hand.
Okay.
It's not actually on the rare and endangered list in Oregon. It is in other states. It's very widespread, but you never see more than a handful of plants. In 40 years of looking at rare plants and unusual plants in the wilds, I've only found this in the wilds one other time, in the mouth of a lava tube cave up near St. Helens. I've seen it planted in a yard that is in the nursery trade, so. But we have something, you know, we don't know if those collections from, you know, 100 and more years ago are still out there. I think people are working on trying to find these again, but this is a new sighting. And I walked right by it several times over the years and never noticed it. But of course, 95% of the potential habitat is covered in ivy at the moment.
Now, this is, this is within Waterboard Park.
This is Waterboard property.
Okay. I'm going to make a request. It didn't occur to me to, to actually forward it. But if it was intended to be part of this discussion, when you do that, be sure to flag Nancy so we can get it into the record because we don't, I don't think we have this in the record, do we? His email? It's not here.
I, I wasn't thinking in terms of this meeting.
Oh, you weren't, okay.
I was just announcing that it had been found because I thought it was quite interesting.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We have now Jerry Herman and Barbara Renkin.
Hi, I'm Jerry Herman. I'm a member of the Natural Resource Committee, and I'm just sending around to you something that I think speaks to the spirit of what we're trying to do here. There was a question posed, I think by Tony, what are we trying to do with this ordinance and such? And I think our committee, first of all, we met six times the last 24 months on this issue. Last 24 months, six of our meetings, six months' worth of meetings have been spent on trying to refine the heritage grove and the street, the street tree ordinance also to make it more acceptable to everyone. We did conduct two, do two tours. That was our suggestion that we go out in the field and test this. And I would have to tell you, the reason I gave you that flyer, is we're going to be talking about testing things in the field when we go on a bus tour on Saturday from 9 until 12:30. It's part of the Willamette Falls Festival. Not only are we going to look down on Waterboard Park and the assemblage of trees that is unique to that area, we're going to look at water interfaces between creeks, streams, rivers, and the land. That's called your Water Resource Orbelay District. And I don't think this body understands what that means. It took me a long time to figure it out. It took a number of tests in the field with developers and others to understand the limitations and also the opportunities that it presents. But I think all these things are a new scientific approach to trying to resolve how do we work within the urban environment? And you know, it's tough. Cities are now being requested to act as stewards of the land, the air, the runoff of humans and their activities. And that never used to be the case 20 years ago. It was environmental groups, which I was involved in and still am, and others that led that campaign. And I think it's a learning curve we're all up against. I want to speak to the spirit of what we're trying to do here. Okay? Waterboard Park is a natural area. It's a charter park, yes. Scott mentioned that. Why would you inventory the trees there as to their quality? They're moving down the slope with the land. The land is creeping in a geologic fashion. The best geology in Oregon we're going to look at is in Action right below Brighton Overlook. That's going to be one of our major stops. It wouldn't be worth the time to inventory those trees, you know, in the classic sense of the ordinance that we're talking about here, because it's not needed. It's a natural area, but it's truly an assemblage of unique character underway because the land's moving and it has to adjust. It's an amazing thing to see. We're hoping our Natural Resource Committee to nominate this to the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries as a classic Oregon site. It's so unique, Waterboard Park. Down within the so-called Public Works area, I call it the perched armory area, where the armory's perched nearby, okay? There are these areas that Brian talked about with assemblages of trees that are perched where the ice age floods came roaring through. We can't go into that area on Saturday with the 44 passenger bus because it's too big. But it's an amazing thing in the future, should the access be improved, whatever mechanisms you use, that people on the Oregon City side could see the effects of the ice age floods scouring and leaving perched assemblages of trees. Your Community Services Development Director also talked about incomplete applications. I would like to know how a community member could complete an application in this day and age, with all the considerations that are required, without the help of staff. Now, staff, we know they have a big load on them. But we're asking, your city processes and cities throughout Oregon are now being asked to act as stewards of the environment. So we're going to have to address this in the future. One of the things we've been talking about, I know you're discussing possibly in the future, a community forester, really a community ecologist approach. That's both a forester and ecology person. And last but not least, I guess I'm going to put now, is the spirit of trying to really act as stewards. There's an opportunity to be stewards here, however you decide. Stewardship on these two sites, John's already come his way to try to accommodate some preservation, could be unique to Oregon City.
Yeah. It was one of the reasons I spoke to the Natural Resource Committee, as you'll remember, that I thought the heritage tree ordinance was a poor vehicle to talk, to deal with what you're talking about. Natural areas which, because of the habitat and so forth, is not specifically a individual tree area, but as, and to look at another ordinance to deal with habitat, to be protected as opposed to using the heritage tree ordinance for that purpose. And I hope that's something the Natural Resource Committee looks at.
We did talk about it extensively at our last meeting, two weeks ago. And yes, we are going to address it. But all your ordinances, no matter what they are, if they're going to interface with the environment, have to address that issue too.
Yeah, but you, you have to, you have to, you have to figure out a mechanism of getting those areas defined so the others can interact.
Great.
Thank you. And I, Ms. Renkin.
I'm Barbara Renkin, and I live in the Park Place neighborhood of Oregon City. On Sunday, I was invited, my husband and I were invited to attend a meeting at the Armory at the Waterboard Park regarding the Heritage Grove application. The meeting was well-attended by members of the Natural Resource Committee, as well as the neighbors and other concerned citizens such as myself. My own concern is that the requested application for that area had kind of gotten lost in the city files with, they have a lot of things that are going on. And I want to thank you very much for showing your unanimous approval for putting this on the agenda for tonight so that we can move along with this, or they can move along with And I want to thank Mr. Daniels and Mr. Nocida, because if they had not pursued this, I don't even know, you know, it would have fallen through the cracks, I'm sure. Having been involved successfully as a chief petitioner for the urban renewal measure, and having spoken personally to many citizens in many neighborhoods in Oregon City, there had been and continues to be some general concern over transparency between the staff, the commission, and the citizens. And I, and I, tonight, I would, I'd like to say that I see a lot of cooperation and a lot of... a lot of interaction with the talk, and I want to thank you very much for that. I think the other concern I have is the fragileness of that area. It, it used, you used to be able to drive a car up there.
Mm-hmm.
And you can't even hardly see the road now. I mean, it's hard to believe there was a road. So I don't know about building there. I mean, that's up to a geologist, but, anyway, I just want to thank you all for all the time and that you, and effort that you put into this and your concern for the city.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment in terms of, even if that were not a park at this point, it was in its current condition, our steep slopes ordinance would prevent any development from occurring there, so. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Without getting into discussion of what staff did or did not do, the point is, we have this, we have this public process that we're dealing with this particular issue. I'd like to just start up with a couple of things. Appreciate Mr. Nocida coming in and pointing out the, a new plan that has been put forward by the Public Works Director in terms of the uses of this area, trying to protect as much as possible the, the growth outcroppings that you have. I think I mentioned at the last meeting, the city is trying to find a, another site for the Public Works Department. I don't think we can exclude this site. We went through the library sighting issue, and we found it very difficult to see either a site with a current building or a site that was open that we could, we could use in terms of either the price that we'd have to pay for the property or for the usability of the facility that was there as a future library. And ultimately, the, both the library board, which is very diverse, and the city commission, which had big issues with the concept to begin with, ended up making the decision we had to use the current site. And so, I think it would be very premature for us to make any decisions about the use of, the current use of the public works site. An alternative design has been given here by John Lewis, has been extremely receptive to the public on various issues that have come up, whether it be crosswalks or anything else. And I think, I think many people in this, in this room actually have, have seen that change occur, and it's greatly appreciated. And I, what I wanted to do is entertain, just suggest before we go into discussion of whether we want to discuss the Waterboard Park piece and the Public Works piece separately in our discussion.
I would prefer to.
Okay, so there's a consensus of doing it. I'd like to deal with the easiest one first, maybe, is Waterboard Park.
[laughing]
And open it up to discussion on the floor then, not on the floor, among us, excuse me. Does anybody want to speak first?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I put, I got my name up first. Like I said, I don't think this is the best vehicle, but the point is, it is a forested area and nothing else is going to happen there. And we agreed at the last meeting, we would evaluate this under current code. We're not going to wait for any code to supersede it. I don't think it could. The application was made under current code, and I don't think it could proceed under a different code change. But in any case, I prefer a different vehicle for dealing with this, but I don't see any other use for Waterboard Park other than what it has at this time. The, the issue that Mr. Cockle pointed out in terms of invasive species, I've been impressed by a lot of people that live in that area have been going down and, and working on that particular problem. And I hope that community effort is able to, you're not going to, you're not going to, you're not going to do away with the invasive species, but you can control them. But it takes an ongoing process. It seems Spady there shaking her head yes, and she's involved in that ongoing process on her property. And maybe we can resolve the natural, maybe we can resolve Waterboard Park as a current motion to accept a, accept this request in terms of the Waterboard Park area and deal with that at this point.
I would move, I would make that motion, but do you have?
Any comments first? Before we do that, go ahead.
Yes, yes, before we move forward.
I got Betty Moon and then Carol Polly.
I kind of want to know what the process is. Okay, so you fill out the application, and then who's going to go out and identify the trees? Is that on staff to do that, or is that on the applicant to do that? Because even if we put it in Waterboard Park, Scott brought up a good point, you know, who's going to identify the trees, the growth? That's my question.
We have, without going to staff, we had that before us. We had that of a tree that was in the public right of way.
Right.
That an individual.
Right.
Proposed it.
Yes.
So I presume that can apply to any publicly owned land. An individual could request that to be identified as a, as a heritage tree. So we, we had one and we rejected it, but we had one brought forward by an individual citizen.
The citizen brought forward the one tree.
That's right.
So this is a grove, so the citizen is bringing forward the grove, and the citizen is going to say the grove has to contain six trees, 10 trees, they have to be 20 feet, eight feet, 20 inches. You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, and I think that's, that's, that's defining a grove in the ordinance. I guess it, I guess, I guess we don't have to be too concerned about this site because it is a big grove of trees.
Oh, I, I totally agree. I mean, I, I said at the last meeting, I was fine with this for the Waterboard Park piece. I just don't want people to expect staff or anybody else to be out there measuring trees and, you know, expectations.
Yeah. Just, just for the record, I believe it was the Neighborhood Association that made the application, not an individual's citizen. Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, next, Commissioner Polly.
Um, yes, I try to think of questions that people, you know, out there watching this and other public members may have. And so, a question I think that people may be thinking about is, since this is already a charter park, a natural park, and it's the highest designation, what other protection then does the Heritage Grove apply to it? Is it open for grants and work programs? What else does this program afford to it than what it already has as a very highly protected park? Can anybody answer that?
Well, that's a good question.
I don't think I can answer to that.
Excuse me, this is a staff, a staff and commission discussion at this point. We might call you forward later, but the question's been posed in terms of our current protections with our current ordinances. Do you want to give that a try?
I don't, I don't, I don't think I have, I don't think I have a good, I don't have enough research to know if there's different grants for it because it's designated a Heritage Grove. I don't, I don't have enough.
I got to ask the hard question.
[laughing]
I don't have a good answer for you on that.
Can I make a suggestion? Mr., I want to say Bucie Bus.
Listen.
I'm making you work, aren't I?
Is an attorney from a tree hugger school.
This one I've got an answer for, so.
We can invite him forward. I just, I just wanted to make sure staff didn't have any comments first.
One, one quick comment. 12.08045 allows the city of Oregon City's to accept gift and funding of planting trees in the, for the planting and maintenance of trees within the city. It's not limited just to Heritage Grove, but that might be something where the, you may be more, if you're weighing where you're going to put the money, it might end up being going towards Heritage Groves as to something else.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
With that, I'll invite Mr. Bus forward. I wanted to, I want to clarify whether it is clear among us in terms of our current ordinances what the issue is. Come on forward if you wish.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I can't speak to any state or federal grants, but the actual code as it exists right now in Oregon City requires that removal of any heritage tree or grove requires mitigation, unless it's removed because of poor health or hazard pursuant to Section 12.08042, which I think is no longer in the code. I printed this up about an hour before the meeting, and that section's not in Chapter 12. So that would seem to suggest that any tree removal that's been designated would require mitigation. And I don't know if that's within the park, within any geographic area, or just within the city, but that would be a difference between just a city tree and a heritage tree.
So that is a higher protection.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, very good. Do you have a comment specifically to the, to the ordinances we're talking about? Do you want to come forward? Yeah, we need, we need, I shouldn't ask you to, again, identify yourself. That was Mr. Bus that spoke previously, but identify yourself again.
The Armory, I know, received a grant, and I think it was around $8,000 to $10,000, and for the maintenance and beautification of Waterboard Park. And that's how a lot of the ivy stripping was done, and we went in and we took out graffiti. They put a couple of benches in, and there's a trash can at the bottom of the trailhead now and at the top. So I do know that there are some grants available, and I think that was through the Parks and Recs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Boyce, you had your hand up, too.
Yeah, I had a comment or two on this subject. Brian Boyce again. One of the big advantages, I think, is tourism. I think that tour guides should be made aware of heritage nominations and designations, I should say. And they should, you know, when you have an eight-foot-thick pine tree in somebody's yard, it's impressive, and a tour bus can at least drive by. And walking tours the same way. And so I think that's a real important thing. And as far as people talk about funding, I will have some information in the near future on that subject concerning Waterboard Park, so.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll start a discussion of the Public Works property.
Well, should we vote on?
Do we have to vote on that one?
Oh, yes, excuse me, we got to vote first. My apologies. And you wanted to make the motion, did you get it out yet? Second?
Can you speak the motion into the room?
Yeah. Oh, I, I, my motion is to adopt the heritage ordinance for Waterboard Park.
Second.
I, I've hit it. Or somebody hit it.
Third.
[laughing] We've got a screen coming up to give us our vote. It was moved by Chair Roth and seconded by me. I beat you to it, Rocky. Vote please.
Doug and Kathy, it doesn't look like you voted.
I already did. It was voted already for me.
There we go.
It was voted for me, too.
Okay. Which in the system, okay. All right.
We probably did three times each.
I think so. We have three votes.
No.
I love it.
No, it is you, then.
Motion passes, yes.
Now the discussion of Public Works site. If the, if the Public Works, if the Public Works does not need this site, there'll be, of course, a big discussion of what happens there, and I think it's incumbent on us to look at this as the possible future use of this particular site, should Public Works say that we don't need it, whether it be, maintain, remain in public ownership, perhaps even declare it a park in its own right, or in fact, other uses be permitted, which would require some corresponding to the zoning that's already there. I think it's kind of a complicated issue. I, the, the, I take the envelopes that are drawn here are the, the requests that came in with the proposal. Is that correct? I'll just ask Bill Daniels and James Nocida. The envelopes that are on this map. No, I could ask our planning director for that, right?
John did it.
Mr. Mayor, as a clarification, the envelopes I drew don't correspond precisely with the application. The application is all trees of any size. What I drew were, were essentially, were the areas of non-conflict between John Lewis's drawing and the, the information as to what trees were eligible. There are individual trees scattered throughout the upper yard that I didn't include.
Yes.
So the commission would be making a distinction between, it could, I mean, there seems to be three options or more. One would be the entire upper yard, one would be what I've outlined in black as the areas of non-conflict. And, you know, there might be variations within that as well, so.
If, if anybody feels that there, go ahead, I have, Commissioner Polly.
Um, yes, I was just going to mention that we, I do feel that we are stewards of our natural spaces. I think they're very important. Our trees are very important, but we're also stewards of our public facilities. And I think in this situation, we need to make sure that there aren't any arms tied behind backs when it comes to having the option open. And I understand that the, what you showed doesn't, it shows no conflict. But sometimes there's unintended consequences, and I just don't want to make a problem for the next commission or have something with unintended consequences until we know, until we know the location of the Public Works.
Any other comments? Commissioner Smith.
Similar comment, however, one of my, one of my problems with this is, is the fact that this is still on the list for Public Works site. I personally think it's the last possible place in the city that Public Works should be. But it's still on the list. We brought up the example of the library, which I think is a perfect example, because a year ago I would have said keeping the library at its location was the last thing on my list, but I voted to approve it, and I think it's, I think it was the right decision. So I, I'm, you know, we're juggling lots of layers here, and I think this is intriguing. And I, so I would say that I would, for the point that Commissioner Polly mentioned, be very wary of, of putting some sort of level on this whole property. However, in looking at this and the effort that Public Works has made to address some of those issues, I could definitely see moving forward in protecting at least those areas right now in some sort of way, or at least moving towards that. And then waiting for the rest of the property, once we determine where Public Works is going to be, hopefully somewhere else. And my opinion is, this is a park someday. It should be. And so I, maybe there's a possible way to move forward tonight in at least trying to address how we would protect at least some of these areas that we know we could even work around, even if we go forward with Public Works. I don't know if we have enough information to do that tonight. If we don't, then let's work towards that for the next meeting. I don't know how everyone else feels about it, but that's kind of how I feel at the moment.
I could make a recommendation that we could make a motion to the effect that at the point that the Public Works sighting is resolved, be it here or elsewhere, then this comes back to us. In either case, it comes back to us.
That's, yeah. That's what I was, you're reading my mind, actually.
So, and it comes, it comes back to the commission that's sitting. I mean, the commission itself.
Right.
The fact that there's been an attempt here to incorporate all the parking that we required, and some, some of these are, some of these, I'm still a little confused about what the not, no conflict zone is, but the, it appears that, yeah, I guess I still don't quite understand it because the area outside of this envelope is a, a conflict zone, and I don't think that's what's intended either. In any case, I think this could be fine tuned, but I think we really need to know what the status of this property is going to be in terms of the Public Works sighting decision. And so we could put something, a postponement, but a specific postponement in terms of when this could come back to us.
Mayor, if I, if I might.
Yes.
Just, just a reminder that if you pick a different Public Works site, or if you pick this one, either, either scenario is going to require site, site plan approval by the pick this one, either, either scenario is going to require site plan approval by the commission. So you'd be able to, at the time, pick any trees or grove or area, map it out however you want. And I'd like to think that if we build, I should back up, when we build some sort of Public Works facility, and I feel this really way, this way about all of our facilities, I like it for, for it to be a model of what can be done with urban forestry on the site. And I think the contrast, actually, between Public Works, the things that they do, and, and then doing it sort of like we can here in Oregon, I think that's more than just what's on the license plate, and I'd like to be part of making that something that people could be very proud of.
Our attempt at the motion is to guarantee through our process that this comes before, before the commission.
Yeah, I'm just saying it'll have to, because you have to prove the site plan on your own property.
Yeah.
But it doesn't hurt to have a motion if it makes anybody feel like it's somehow more likely to happen that way, it's fine.
Well, just in case we have a commission at one point that, or a city manager that isn't that concerned about our tree, our tree city designation, or is not concerned about white oaks, this guarantees it gets a public process in the effort, and I think that's the benefit of, of the vote.
Yep.
Oh, we got a couple more people, my apologies, Commissioner Moon.
Well, I was gonna say that trees are important, white oaks are important. But I do think it was, until we have a new Public Works building, and we know what we're gonna do with this property, and I believe that part of that property there should be a public park, maybe incorporated into Waterboard Park. But until we have that final home for our Public Works area, I couldn't vote to do this, this designation, because I don't know what that means to us as citizens, you know, as the commission, what does that mean to us? How does that affect what the Public Works Department's gonna do? And, you know, what would it, eventually, that property more than likely would probably be sold to somebody, I would hope, and that money be put back in to help pay for the Public Works Department. And then it'll go back on the tax roll. That would be the lower part, but the upper part, I think, could be part of the Waterboard Park eventually. So I think that it's, it's a, it's a good process, it's something that we should keep talking about, and I do think we need a motion.
Then President, Commissioner President Roth?
Okay, you probably all know that my position's a little bit different on this. But I believe that Waterboard Park will eventually be on this site, so.
Yeah.
You know, I'm an emergency manager, that's what I do for a living.
It'll be all one.
It's going to be one big place, so it really doesn't matter. So, I think we need to really, seriously, we were laughing about it, but I think we really need to seriously consider that. It's a geographically sensitive area, not only for the flora and the fauna there, but, you know, it's, it's moving very rapidly. And I think any little shake could make a big part of Waterboard Park right down into the rest of it. As far as not being able to maintain the site, if we add more responsibility by designating this as a heritage grove, we don't currently maintain what we're supposed to be doing anywhere, anywhere.
I know, it's true.
So I don't see any conflict. I mean, I, I really don't. I, I think it's something that needs extreme protection. And not only because of the site being open to further development, and I do really appreciate the work that John has done on this, I think he's done a marvelous job. But I have concerns other than just protecting the trees there. My overall feeling is that there's no way, this is the last place on earth, that we should have a Public Works society, or society. Do you start a society?
That too.
John, will you open your society up?
Yes.
We be members.
And so I, I believe that the, the site needs the protection of, of the Heritage Grove application.
I'm just gonna speak about only one thing, the, the priority of this site being the lowest. I used to, of course, we have the McLaughlin neighborhood association is doing the petitioning, but I thought as this process was going forward, it was nice to have Public Works close to my area where it floods, and Public Works is very involved in the cleanup of that site, where we have the steep slopes during snow events, and Public Works are very close to that site.
But then you moved.
Yeah, but then you moved.
That's what I was going to say. But then, then, then I moved out of the area. The point is, the thing I wanted to say, when, when, when this, the original proposal was put forward, an expansion at this particular site, it was done at recognition that some of our most problematic areas for Public Works to deal with is, in this particular area, we've got your old side of town, and bailing sewer systems, and all those kinds of things. So it was not without thought on the part of staff that put this forward as the site to continue to build on. But recognizing that the neighborhood as a whole took a different position than my personal one, and that, and that we have input from the users of the, of the park and so forth, I think we're in a different situation. I just don't think at this point, you, anybody can put forward a motion, but I, I don't want to take this off of Public Works' consideration simply because what we went through in the library process. And my suggestion again was to put forward a motion that when a site is, is decided upon, this comes back to us, whether the site at Public Works is a different place, or whether this is going to be used for a different purpose, that this particular thing come back to us at that point, no matter what the decision of the Public Works site is.
Move to approve. What Doug just said.
Why can't I make a motion?
So what's the motion?
So, Bill, can you sum up the motion?
As I understand the motion, the motion is to postpone consideration of this nomination for, to Heritage Grove on the Public Works portion of the site until such time as the location of the Public Works facility is determined.
There you go.
You said it very succinctly.
Yes.
Does it have a, oh, nobody has made a motion, I can't make the motion.
I made a motion, didn't I?
Do we have a second? And it's all there?
And we voted already.
And we, I just voted.
No, Doug didn't, oh, I did.
And Kathy has voting made, and so we have a four to, a four to one vote. And thank you for all your testimony. This has been an involved process. You know, the, the process works, if people feel that somehow staff hasn't been communicating well, you can do it through the city commission.
Yes.
And I, I guess I don't take the same view of, of staff's discussions with each other the same way that some members of the public does. That's my personal view, but the point is, we have a process that works, in which public input is, is taken, and we're advancing on this particular proposal. With that, I think we're going to.
Seven F?
Seven F, yeah.
Please come on the tour Saturday.
I love it.
Thank you. So, can I move to approve the consent agenda?
No.
Minus seven F? Minus seven F?
Minus seven F.
Yes? Can I do it that way?
Yep, let me get there.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna make that motion.
So this is the approval, the consent, consent agenda minus seven F.
Second.
All saying aye? Just confirm.
We are.
I don't know.
Are we gonna get this fixed?
Now, here we go into, what, seven F?
I know, it is.
What are we doing? Where are we voting on?
Now, seven F.
Consent agenda.
Rocky wanted to talk about it.
This is Waterboard Park.
How did that come up?
Well, I only.
No, it's, it's, it's okay. Nancy got it, it's fine.
Now, now we're coming to seven F.
Okay, but before that, I was just saying, are we gonna get whatever is happening with these fixed? Because that's, I don't like the fact that it's voting.
She's doing the fixing.
Yeah, it was, there was an update in the vote cast system this last week, and it's, it's just a bug, so we'll get that fixed.
It's just kind of like Microsoft, new Microsoft versions.
It reminds me of the new, it reminds me of the new grading program at school that I'm using.
So, can I ask for staff to talk about seven F?
Yeah, I just brought it up because I thought that we're buying property, people might want to know why we're buying property, but they all left, so.
Yes. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. This is exciting.
Thank you, Bob, Bob.
Yes, this is exciting.
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners. So tonight, I am requesting your approval for a purchase of a parking lot right directly across the street from the library to increase the number of parking spaces that we can offer to patrons.
Problem solved.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask some questions now this has been brought up.
Go ahead.
It has not to do with the approval of this, but what happens after the approval. And so Commissioner Roth has got her name up before I did, so I'll get my, I don't know, no?
Well, my only question is, when we were discussing a piece of property over on Beaver Creek Road by the Chamber of Commerce, and we talked about the parking lot being away from the building and how that would inconvenience people, and they'd get wet and all that stuff.
Okay, yeah.
And so I'm wondering how we're gonna, are we gonna build a covered bridge, or?
May I, can I ask my question at the same time, because you might be able to mold it into the two?
Sure, okay.
If whether we have the capability of parking on the street and to, given we have extra parking up above, that's public, becomes public property, public parking, and whether we can then reserve, reserve parking on the street to library users, so we.
And have a staff.
Or something of that nature, but, but actually, I mean, maybe some other.
Well, I can't ask that question.
Maybe other, maybe other residents could use that, you know, people that are normally packed on the street could use that.
I do not know the answer to the question, can we reserve street spots for library patrons? I know we can, of course, put some aside for handicap parking, and we might be able to do like a couple of express spaces or something like that, ten-minute spaces, something?
Not a good place to. And I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm gonna say that the intent here is not to affect the vote of this, but the intent, City Manager, is to really get this question before us, it has nothing to do with the vote on the issue here, but to, you know, throw out some ideas at this point.
So we can look into that.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what our ordinance is here. I know in Portland, there are public buildings that have reserved parking on the street.
So that's a great question.
Police all over the place for what?
Yeah, I know, right? They're so annoying. So we'll look into that. But, I mean, you also raise a good issue about the, being away from the, so I really want to look into having an entrance on the Jefferson Street side. Yeah.
Yes.
Because that makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? It's so much closer to that parking lot.
Upstairs and a downstairs entrance.
Yeah, which is what we have now, so. Yeah, so we're getting that priced accordingly.
Right.
Okay.
Nice, thank you.
Having asked questions, that was not going to influence our decision here, but just to get them out there.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion?
Sure.
Or do I see a motion?
You see one. I move to purchase the parking lot at Seventh and Jefferson for library use.
Okay, and there was a race for second.
And I've already.
And I won. Oh, good. Good chair, Chair Roth made the motion.
Okay, motion, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
I didn't even get to push the a button this time. You know, I couldn't make, somebody can make a motion and oppose against it, you know.
It defaults to.
That's true.
Yes, anyway. With, with that, are we going to City Managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. Have a lot of things to talk about this evening. First of all, I want to, because it's probably most fresh in your mind, the Boynton Street sidewalk issue, we've, a lot of work has been done. And I think we, we don't have any free sidewalks still, but what we do have is a very different process and a very different way of approaching the enforcement. So I just want to give you just sort of a nutshell of what's been done. I know we've sent you quite a bit of email about it, but I also have a, a letter, I have an actual copy of the actual letter that people will get in the future, you'll see it's quite a bit different than the one you saw before. And we have this new nifty brochure that we think explains everything very easily, it's got little color things on it, it's also on our website.
It's usually, that, I just noticed, that's usually printed on.
A larger.
Larger piece of paper.
That's what I'm thinking, didn't you say this is an elderly neighborhood?
Trying to save the trees, no, I'm just kidding.
An elderly neighborhood, it's a neighborhood older, the people that's there.
The people that live there.
But I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna give you guys hard copies of the letter that we'll be sending, but I also want to just run down some, this is just some of the changes. I mean, it's really been an amazing testament to how determined our staff can be at solving problems when they really dig their, their heels in and try to do that. So we have coordinated and held a neighborhood meeting for the Boynton Street property owners, I know some of you saw that on the news. We weren't too, we were a little bit surprised about the news coverage, but we were still, nonetheless, had a lot of people there, we had people from police, Public Works, engineering, code enforcement, and virtually everybody who would have had answers was there, they took a lot of notes, they provided a lot of information. So that was an important meeting. They also provided the, those from Boynton Street area an additional six months to complete their sidewalk repairs. They reviewed and discussed, and by the way, we're gonna try to make these policies all consistent in the future, so it won't just be Boynton, trying to avert that problem in the future. Revised and discussed applicable city codes to ensure consistent sidewalk policy administration, reviewed sidewalk construction standards to ensure details are complete and easy to understand for the layperson. We verified with code enforcement the current process for complaint tracking and verification, completed a new notification letter, which I will send, pass around here. We also completed a new safe sidewalks require community stewardship brochure that I showed you, that'll also be passed around. We implemented a policy change, which allows for group permits for up to five property owners at a time, so they can share the permit. We also are doing that because we want to encourage them to, if they're all linked together, we're hoping that they will pursue the repairs together, because we just think they'll get a better deal.
Does that bring the cost down to them?
It should.
Single permit.
It should. And we also have a list of what we would consider credible contractors that aren't gonna, you know, charge people unreasonable prices. We also have implemented a policy change, which allows permit staff to work with property owners to provide up to 180 days to complete the repairs once they're started, assuming reasonable progress is being made at the end of the 90-day limit established in the code. We've implemented a policy change to ensure permit documentation is clear and helpful for contractors, as well as property owners. We've implemented a policy change, and this is my favorite one, and it's a really perfect time to mention it, but it's too bad all the tree folks are gone, but it says, it allows property owners to meander their sidewalks around street trees.
Oh.
Which I think is fabulous. There's also an option to buy latex panels, but those are pretty expensive, so my guess is a lot of them won't go for that. But if they can move it around the tree, that's, that's just wonderful. And then implemented a policy change, which allows property owners to profile and grind sidewalks with up to one-inch grade difference. It was only a half inch before, so we're giving people more flexibility on that. And I just want to thank the Police Department, and Code Enforcement, and John Lewis, and Tony Conkle, and all the team that made this happen so far. People say government can't work fast, and these guys really did an amazing job.
That was fabulous.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a question. These are policy changes that are internal to management, that is, these are not things that we have to act upon?
You don't have to change your code to do that.
Okay, very good.
So here's a copy of the letter and the brochure.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
I got someone forwarded a, you know, I work for the government too, and I got someone forwarding an email to me today, and as a joke at the end of it, they put, "I'm from the government, and I'm here to help." This is really the case where it is. The government stepped in to help.
We, we, you know, I've been invited to, to come to the South End Neighborhood Association pretty soon, and last time I was there, I got, I had a interesting reception, I'd only been working for the city a month or so. And they want, this is something that I think the chair suggested we talk about, we have so many other things happening in Oregon City that are, that are big kind of game changers for the community, that I'm, I'm a little more excited about talking about that than this, but I'm gonna keep talking about it as long as it takes. The bottom line is, there isn't a free sidewalk. And even if we took it over and recreated a utility, there would still be a payment on average, and over time, the same people have, you know, so there's just not a free way to do it. And the way we're doing it is very similar to cities all across the United States that cope with this problem. I just think the method that we're using now is much more customer-friendly, and I think our code enforcement people, I want them to feel supported, that they can still go out and do their jobs. And so my message is gonna be, you still have to do it, but there's an easier, better way for us to communicate that, and to be a partner in trying to provide those services.
Excellent.
Very good.
Commissioner Smith has his hand up, so.
It looked like everyone thought, I appreciate all the work that's been done on this, I think it's a big change, and I think it's very helpful. The one thing I don't agree with, or I don't think is probably the greatest idea, which everyone else to the left of me seemed to be excited about, was the sidewalks just going wherever. wherever, meandering around trees, and, and I was very opposed to that in the sense, in the case that we, the example at the Stevens Crawford House where we went around trees and then later the trees got cut down and died, and now we have a sidewalk that goes and then jets off, you know, almost 10 feet and then down the street. So I'm, I'm really concerned about how that piece is implemented because of how our city looks. I mean, if we are doing, if we have sidewalks going around trees all over the place, I'm sure there's probably exceptions where there's no other option, but how do we address that piece of it so that our city doesn't look like a crazy mess?
Well, it's funny, you brought that up, because I've, every time we go over there for our budget, I've always got my arms full of books and I'm doing that, and I don't mind doing it, and if I'm going around a tree in Portland, they have a lot of those.
Right.
But they're usually one or two trees, they're not whole strips.
Right.
So I think in the administration of it, John and his folks are gonna be looking more at individual...
How, okay. Because that worries me a lot.
The other thing is, I mean, some of our sidewalks are already pretty narrow, but in our new standards, they're five-foot sidewalks for, in a residential neighborhood, and so when everybody does this with regard to meandering, it's more likely to be allowing a little bit of encroachment into that five feet, so that we might...
The tree itself encroaching, yeah, right.
Right, so not necessarily move that other edge. Moving that other edge, depending on where the right of way is, might result in an easement.
Right.
It's, it's got legs to it that I think the community would probably choose to avoid.
Right.
At least, you know, we're not encouraging it, we're just saying, you know, there might be, there might be a heritage tree provision that we would, you know, want to make that kind of...
Okay, very good, that's all I...
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to our next topic.
I'm gonna make a comment, like you said there. And he's talking about existing development, but when Home Depot put in the, put in, I'll call it, the sidewalk that extends all the way to the end of the Trail Interpretive Center, when they, they did that as part of their development, this gets a curving pathway, and it really is nice.
Sure.
A little bit more difficult to deal with, I agree, where you already have these linear sidewalks in place, but the only real concern I have about that is, you know, people that have sight problems, you know, they might be anticipating they can walk straight ahead when maybe they run into a tree or something, which, which...
Or an outdoor seating table.
Or bikes.
Or a sign, or you have those other kind of impediments.
We don't, we don't meander around telephone poles, so why would we?
They don't, they don't have roots.
We just put the side...
They don't have roots!
You're meandering around my reports. May I continue?
Okay, go ahead. Yes, you may.
All right, so next I want to, really want to compliment Nancy Ide and Nancy Warner, who have been working on our franchise fee ordinance. We have what I consider to be perfect memo, and I don't say perfect very much, because I'm a writer and I don't say that very often. This is just a great piece of work. You're gonna see this, and it's literally two pages, bullet points, and it's like, so what's changing? And then it tells them, and then on the next page, what's not changing, and there's a small bit, and then what are the advantages of the proposed right-of-way utility ordinance? So, you'll be getting this, because this is coming up, and you may be getting lobbied, and so you'll know my recommendation is the same as the attorney's, which is, don't discuss this outside executive session until you're ready. But Nancy, they're gonna be getting this, they've already got it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Good piece of work. Do you have any questions after you read that? I mean, I know we send you so many pieces of correspondence, and some of these, well, this is our packet tonight on a single item, right? I love, I love it when you can get something on two pages and you literally know everything you need to know about how to address questions when you get them.
So is this for exec, is that what you're saying?
I believe it's not.
No, this is in response, if you, if you receive phone calls from the public or any, or our franchisees, it'll give you some words to help answer questions.
But I would actually hang on to that and keep it all the way through the process, because, you know, it could take a while, depending on how much testimony you get.
Okay.
Most people, when they have to give up something they've been getting that's pretty easy and start paying for it, they don't always like it. So, anyway, thank you Nancy for that great work. And then Mo, you've got some things on the library?
Always plugging library events, as you know, and this Friday is our second First Friday film, and I know this Friday is like crazy busy with all kinds of other things going on.
Yeah.
And that you guys probably are already going to historical dinner or some such thing, because Alice Norris is more powerful than I am, but...
I wouldn't guarantee that. I think you're...
But, anyway, I want to...
You should've come to us first, before Alice Norris.
Hey, I had this on the agenda for a long time, just don't read my stuff, but I want you to know, truth hurts, doesn't it?
I was there at the last movie and I heard the announcement.
Okay, so, no excuse.
I didn't have to read.
I want to be sure you know what you're missing.
Yes.
So you're gonna be missing the movie Ride the Divide, which was actually recommended to me by Chief Jim Band, who's not here, and it's a movie of mountain bike race from the Canadian Rockies all the way to Mexico. I know.
I know, my husband wants to do that, I'm like, you know.
Sad, right?
I don't think no.
You should come to see what trouble he would get into, and it's co-sponsored with First City Cycles, and it's at the end of the Oregon Trail in their theater, which is gonna be very cool, sit in comfortable seats.
Yes.
But you won't be there, so.
Since we, we'll make sure we're not there.
It's, uh, right, it starts at, doors open at 6:00, because a local writer, Tom Batty, will be there, and then the movie starts at 7:00, and he has done it before, so he's gonna talk about, he's got his equipment there and all that. And then, really, really quickly, the day after your next commission meeting, so you need to get this on the calendar now, we have our first big author visit, and it is author Brian Doyle, who wrote Mink River and a whole bunch of other things. Mink River is amazing.
That's a 17.
And Virginia Uwe-Wolff, who is a children's author, local, she's nationally famous, she's really well-known, and she does not speak very often, and...
Who's that?
Virginia Uwe-Wolff.
That's not the one that we're supposed to be afraid of, is it?
So, so that is a 17. That's a 17, yeah.
Okay, what time is that?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Before you leave, we had a major discussion in my family, and I'm going to the dinner, my wife's going to the movie.
Wow.
I love to split up couples.
Nice.
So, next, and certainly not least, is, I wanna, I've got just a wonderful opportunity here to share with you something about our Jug Handle project and how much attention it's gained across the United States. The American Public Works Association every year gives out awards in categories for projects, and the 25 million to $75 million category is where our project was competing, and, and in that range, we're at the very bottom of that cost range, so we're competing with these bigger, glitzier projects, and of all of the cities in the United States, this is probably the most competitive category, and Oregon City won.
Yay! Congratulations.
And not only that, we got this very cool plaque, and I'm not a plaque guy, but this one is pretty neat, because it's very solid and heavy. There it is, right there, that's what it looks like. And just so much credit goes to Alida, John, Nancy Crushar, the whole team at the city, actually our staff up here at City Hall who answered questions about it.
That is great.
And the Commission, absolutely, for funding this and helping us get the money, and Alice Norris, who was on the phone till 2:00 in the morning with people.
Yes.
This is a community effort, the community should be so proud of this, I know I am. Way to go, John. Just thank you, everybody.
That's, that's...
I'll pass that around.
And it's...
And also, the article is on our, I believe it's on our website, if it's not on there, it's on its way to being on there, but I'll pass that article around too, because that's really quite an honor, especially when you consider we're competing against all those other cities in the United States.
Yes.
So, next, Mr. Conkle has a report, we have something that's brewing out there that we just sort of want to give you a heads up about, we don't know if you'll hear about it, but, you know, when we see these things coming, we like to let you know in advance. So Tony, you've got a couple of things there you want to report.
So I think the first thing is, we've been contacted by a couple of property owners on Thera Estates, it's out on the east side of Beaver Creek Road over by the Community College, and the apartments there, and there's a, there's a pedestrian path from Coltrane Court to Beaver Creek Road. They've come in and requested that that be closed, so staff is beginning the, the investigation of what the issues are, trying to get an understanding of what the issues are, what the opportunities may be, what concerns there may or may not be, but just wanted to give the Commission an update that you may receive inquiries or questions about that, and it ultimately may be something that we do bring in front of you, if we're not able to address the condition.
Is it a public path, or is it just a path that...
It's a public, it's a public constructed path, yep, yep.
So staff has to start with the presumption, since it's a public pathway, that we have it there for a reason, and we're probably be inclined to say no at first plus, but we are gonna investigate it, and we just wanted you to know in case you had any calls or complaints.
Great.
And then there's gonna be a Willamette Falls Legacy Project Open House on October 10th, right?
Correct.
And we'll be giving also tours to the public this weekend during, during the festival, which I think is remarkable, and I'm really happy about that, because I think it was just about three weeks ago, we were, Tony and I were talking about, the waterfall's gonna look different if we don't get some rain. And here we, we, we don't have that problem today, I was at Rotary and looked over the edge, and I was very surprised at how much water is rocking and rolling. So that's gonna be good, they'll get the wet version of the tour.
One more quick thing to that, real quick. So on Willamette Falls Festival's obviously this weekend, we're gonna have a booth as part of that festival on Saturday, the 5th. We are giving tours to the, to the public, but my understanding is those are full at this point. The 10th is an important open house, that's from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Tumwater Room, and that'll be when we start to look at the visions, the opportunities that have come out of all the public involvement that we've had, all the public input, we're gonna start putting down on paper what those opportunities look like. And then the last one, just real quick, is that on October...
What time is that, Tony?
I'm sorry?
What time is that at the Tumwater?
It is from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Tumwater Room on Thursday, October 10th. And then on Thursday, October 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Tumwater Room again, we are contacting former employees of Blue Heron, Smurfit, and Publishers, and they're invited to come to an event that we're holding just for them, so if you're aware of folks who worked there, had relatives who worked there, it'd be great, you can pass along our information or the website, and so we're actively trying to get them to come to an event and get some oral history and just input.
And another note about that, I was at the International City Manager Conference last week in Boston, and a former mayor of Lawrence, Kansas, who I know, because he's a professor of the program at KU for Public Administration, took a class with him many years ago, he came up and asked me about the project. So the word's getting out there, he had heard about it, and we had a little discussion, that was really nice. So Scott, you have something, another kind of thing about the State Marine Board coming to visit Oregon City, right? Or the National Marine Board Conference, who wants to tour our waterfront?
Tomorrow morning, in fact, I was just taking some notes on some of the things we're gonna talk about. Yeah, just kind of a neat thing, sort of a recognition and appreciation thing of some of our facilities, and as you know, we've got a number of projects that we've done with the Marine Board along our waterfront, Sportcraft Marina, or the Sportcraft Boat Ramp at, near, near the marina, that we renovated a couple of years ago, the, a lot of the stuff around John Storm Park, and then our Clackamet site. So there's a National Boating Association, and the Oregon State Marine Board is kind of the host agency, it's taking place in Portland this week, and they're doing a tour of Marine Board facilities with public agency partners, and they've included us on a significant portion of that tour, so tomorrow morning, there's something like 80 people from all over the country that are gonna be coming and visiting, we're gonna tour the John Storm, Sportcraft, and Clackamet facilities, and just generally talk about our success and some of our learning processes in those projects, so just, we'll be, we'll be talking, we'll be showing off our projects to people interested in boating facilities from across the country tomorrow.
That's wonderful.
And you've got good weather.
Looks like it.
Yeah.
Great.
Thank you Scott.
Thank you.
Then I want to mention that November 12th, from 4:00 to 6:30 PM at the Pioneer Center, there's an open house for the Oregon Passenger Rail Project, and John Lewis and our Public Works crew have been attending those meetings over the years. So, John, did you want to make any comments on that, or just want to remind people that 4:00 to 6:30 PM, November 12th, at the Pioneer Center, there's an open house? Okay. And then last but not least, I'm trying to prepare for the trip to Japan that I'll be making on behalf of ICMA and visiting our sister city as well. There are nine delegates from the United States and Canada that are going on this, on this trip, and I have somehow been asked to be the group leader, so I have to give a speech the day after I arrive at the Ministry of Internal Government Affairs in Tokyo. I don't know what I'm gonna say yet, but I've got some ideas, and then I have to give another one toward the end of the, the visit there, apart from the visit to our sister city. So I, I agreed to do it, and then after that, they told me about these other obligations. So, but anyway, it'll be a nice challenge, and that's the extent of my report.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to mention too, that Public Works has, or traffic programs, it's gotten recognitions and high recognitions several times from the League of Oregon Cities. This might be the one of highest merit, I don't know, but I went to one where we had, within our size city classification, we got awarded the best one. There's a long history of, of our, our projects through Public Works on transportation, getting these kinds of awards, we've got a great, great record.
And this is remarkable, because it's probably the most competitive category because of its size, and it's all across the United States, and it just so happened, I think it was the largest construction project in our Public Works history.
Yes.
Single, single project in our history, so to have the biggest one and have it get, get that far nationally is just great.
Yeah, that's...
Good, good effort.
I'm gonna make a comment before I go into, before I go into the items here. We all commented how the Chief of Police, our previous Chief of Police, has really created a team effort in his department, and it's carried on to our, to our current, to our current Chief and Lieutenant's. I don't know to what degree the leadership of the executive team has been so apparent in the time that I've served on the Commission. David Fraser has brought the, brought the executive management as a working team, and I think they all have input in many of these issues. We noticed we have our team here, almost, the whole team here at almost every one of our commission meetings. I made a comment, I think it was today, to Scott Archer, that, how impressive that was, he said, "Well, we kinda all like being here, because when we're in our office, we're getting interrupted all the time, and so when there's not a topic that we're dealing with, we can be working unfettered by people asking us questions." So, I guess they have a side benefit from it all, but, you know, it is, I, we talk about transparency, but in terms of the, in terms of the, of the cooperative efforts, in terms of the executive management team, how you pulled it together, I want to compliment you and the team, I think you've done an excellent job, and I'm sure in that process, when you're having the dialogue that involves all the executive managers, even the ones that aren't necessarily involved in the department, certain ideas come forward that are very, very productive. I just wanted to congratulate you, your executive management team, in that particular effort.
Yeah, they do a great job.
The, I want to talk about some of the items, some of them I'm going to kind of defer to other people, but activities that I have been involved in. I, I know at least one of our commissioners and a spouse of another one was at the dedication of the memorial wall put forward by the parents of murdered children. They, they had their, they've had more than one event, but this is the event where they actually had the names of, of the victims. It was, it was a moving ceremony. It, it was a, it was a ceremony that I left, and had me almost in tears on more than one occasion there. And there were over, no, there were just under, I think, 400 names that are currently there. But there are a lot more people, victims that will come into play, and the wall is intended to, actually, I think, make a semicircle through there, the process. The, the speakers were predominantly people who either, I think every one of them had lost, lost loved one in the process. The two people that put it together, I don't know if you recall the organizers' names or not, but that actually put this all together over several years, and had a dedicated effort. And I feel very honored that they selected Oregon City as their site for this memorial. It's, it's actually, it'll be moving for anybody that's going to look at the site itself, whether you're there at a presentation. But I also encourage you to go to the back side, because it wasn't the only, the front side that was dealt with architecturally. It was the back side as well, with several recognitions that were on the back side. Very moving ceremony. And I was, I was glad that the, the Metro Enhancement Committee that put forward grants was able to contribute to the building of that wall. It'll be a continuous, of course, endeavor. There was a couple of public ribbon cuttings that occurred. One was just today at Rivercrest Park, where the state actually, State Parks had actually contributed to the building of the new restroom that's there, and got a tour of the restroom facility.
Oh, my!
Usually you don't get that excited about those kind of things, but it, yeah, it is very nice. And, and so-
I'm glad you appreciate that restroom.
Yeah, I do, I do.
I do.
Good.
And really, it's an important feature to have public restrooms around, anyway, in general.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
The other one, and I'll let Commissioner Pauley speak to it, but there was also a, a ribbon cutting by Oregon City, by Oregon City Commission members at John McLaughlin School on the track that was actually funded out, that same, same granting process, and that the, the track has been done. And I, I don't know who was, who was involved in subsequent ribbon cuttings, but every, almost every grade there had their own ribbon cutting.
Oh, no.
They bring the ki, they bring the kids, they bring the kids out. In our case, it was for the, the first and second graders.
And kindergarten.
No, first and kindergarten, first grade and kindergarten.
The little ones.
And I'll let, I'll let Carol say something about that, but I might add something, something later.
Okay. I'm sure you will.
We went, we went to the, you know, Commissioner Mum and myself, I went to the League of Oregon Cities Conference that was held in Portland this year, and we, we, some of, some of the same sessions we went to together, others we went to separately. And I'm going to briefly talk about the three of them that stood out for me. One was a, where the, the cities, well, the small cities got together in a session, and, and just brought up topics that were of, of general interest. And there were three topics that came up, but one of that I wanted to mention specifically here was homelessness and its impact on the cities came up. And I, I almost said almost nothing, because, because that conversation occurred over a half hour period. We've had concerns, we've had concerns that with the moving of Father's Heart Ministry into Oregon City, that the number of homeless people have increased, and there's no doubt in my mind that has been the case. We also have seen more people that are probably from the Portland area moving into this area, which is, which has a concern. I, I, I didn't laugh, but I couldn't help it, because I believe it was the mayor of Redesport was saying that homeless people are coming into, from Portland into Redesport. And so the, the issues with homelessness that we're, we're dealing with is an increasing one. But it's, it's sort of to be expected, because the, the mental, the mental health support that we were given no longer exists, and a lot of these people are, are now in positions where they're out on the streets. We don't have a nighttime shelter in Clackamas County that I'm aware of, unless certain churches open it. And so it's, it's an area that I think we're going to have to continuously address in Oregon City, but I hope we do it with a sympathetic ear, realizing so many of those people are, in fact, people that have mental illness, people have lost their housing in this last recession, and that, that we'd be very sympathetic to that particular issue. We, and the Police Department, and I, and people from Barclay School who have been concerned, and, and we've also met with the, the directors of that facility on occasions, but I think we're trying to deal with those issues in a, in, in a responsible way. The other two meetings that I wanted to address, address was affordable housing. We've, we not, we have not really established that as a commission goal, but the next commission, I hope they really consider this as an issue. And there were several presentations, there were about four presentations at the affordable housing, but the one that was most impressive to me was what Forest Grove has done. And if, if in fact the next commission looks at this as a, as a goal, I would suggest going to Forest Grove to look at what they've done. They had a lot of public, negative public comment when they started to approach this particular problem. They're dealing with both the rural community where they are, surrounded by farmlands and so forth, but also it within this, residents within the city. And they've done a tremendous job in actually creating some affordable housing there, and having the public far more comfortable with what, what has occurred. So if the next commission, I won't be around, because I can't be around, but I'm, I'm certain that there, well, barring something, I know, I know all these two members will be here, and maybe others will also be here at the next commission, to consider this as perhaps one of the goals that you look at, at the next GOR. The other one that came up was urban renewal issues, and there was a lot of discussion. There are people who haven't had urban renewal districts, what has happened at them, and so forth. And West Lynn, excuse me, Wilsonville has looked at a kind of a different method of tax increment financing, that they have just started implementing this, this last year, that we haven't seen it come to fruition. They had several vacant facilities of industrial land that they wanted to look at this, but also dealing with the issue of distribution of tax increment money among the various school districts. And they came up with an approach that was quite interesting. And I don't know if you're aware of it, it hasn't had an opport, I'm speaking to our, our Economic Development Manager, Eric Underwood. We don't know, we don't know how that plan's going to work out, because they've just started it, but some of the concerns that have come up in our urban renewal discussions, they've had to, to, they've, they've addressed, I think, and it was kind of an interesting plan. So you might want to take a look at that as we look at tax increment funding possibilities for some of our, some of our brownfields, vacant spaces, maybe even, maybe even the Blue Heron site. So those were the ones that I, I wanted to highlight. And with that, maybe I'll just work to my left. As I said, Commissioner Mum was at the League of Oregon Cities Conference. I, I don't know if you had some comments or not. I'll go ahead and move you that direction.
Thank you. I did attend that conference, and I had everything laid out and ready to come down here, and I left it at home. So I don't have a lot of comments about the sessions I attended, but I will have that information next time.
Very good.
And I did accept the award from our insurance company, so I'll bring that next time, because it's on my home table. And the other thing, the memorial you were talking about, Mountview Street for the parents of murdered children, Larry Potter, one of our workers, his name is on the back of the wall on a plaque for all of his work he'd done there.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure, because our team is, you know, beyond this exact team, I mean, but it takes all of you guys working together, including us, to make all these good things happen. And we have just got a lot of good things happening in Oregon City. We are getting a lot of recognition for different projects and stuff.
And just, and just for the record, Larry Potter is in charge of park maintenance.
Yes.
Commissioner Pauley, since I deferred to you on something, and then I kept blabbing off about it, but go ahead.
Yes, as I mentioned, we participated in the ribbon cutting at John McLaughlin School for their track. And it was, it was well attended. It was nice to see that track. I actually walked around it with the kids, and I was told it was almost a half a mile. I thought it was longer, but they said, "Oh, no." And it's just great to see our grants used in ways like that. So that will be a lot of enjoyment for a lot of people, and keep those kids fit and, and safe. It was a, it was a good, good, nice, nice track. I also want to report on Main Street. The search committee brought three of the applicant information in front of the board, three people. They narrowed it down to three people.
Nice.
And so we have, we voted, and we will not divulge anything until it's final, but it's looking good. And the three applicants that were brought in front of us were, were very good. All of them were really good. It was a tough decision, so they did a good job. Mr. Fraser served on that committee as well, and thank you for your service for that. So it's moving in a good direction, and the board is still fully committed to more participation, and we're really looking for somebody that can work for the businesses down there and offer some good support for the next phase of Main Street.
Wonderful.
I'm going to come back to the, I'm going to come back to the McLaughlin ribbon cutting, McLaughlin School ribbon cutting. I think I reported on a ribbon cutting that happened at Holcomb, and it said we, it was for a play structure, and as soon as we cut the ribbon, the kids were right up the, right up the, sort of equivalent monkey bar structure there. The, we ran into the same thing, and that was almost dangerous, because as soon as the ribbon was cut, these, these kindergarten first graders started, we were, we were right on the, we were right on the, on the pathway. Kids were right in front of us, pointed this way, and as soon as we cut, the kids all started running. And it was dangerous, because I had the scissors out here like this, and I had a hole immediately in my chest, because I knew what was going to happen. I almost bowled silver.
I, I do have one thing to add, too. So the other ribbon cuttings afterwards, they were for the major donors for the track. So there were other companies that donated.
Okay.
So they did a separate ribbon cutting for each group of kids that went out, and it was nice, because everybody got the recognition for their contributions.
That's nice, yeah. That's great. That's great.
And then I'll come to my right.
Sure. I don't have anything to report, other than, I've been, you know, I've been here a long time. In fact, I remember hops in the metro transfer station area, so long before 205 was there. I don't drive much anymore, because I carpool. Well, I drove the other day, got off of 205 going north, didn't know where I was. The interchange had changed so much, I was going, "The heck, yeah."
That is funny.
It's really made a big difference in Oregon City.
Did you go the wrong way on 213?
No, I was going the right way, but it was just like, "Where am I?"
(laughing)
So it may be because I remember hops, it's been a little bit too long.
Commissioner Smith?
I have a few things. The, went to the Clackamas Heritage Partners Board meeting, which was, I, I don't know, two weeks ago, maybe. And that was a good meeting. We had representatives from the Oregon City High School Construction Class at the high school with Britt Tucker, who came with a model of what they're seeing as a possible vision for a stage down at the end of the Oregon Trail. That's connected to Metro Enhancement Grant that they got for that. They're moving forward with parks and, and kind of working with that, but we were having a board meeting, and so I wanted the CHP board to have some input with that. I guess since that meeting, Britt comes to my classroom virtually every day, and the kids do, too, which has been great. So even since that last meeting, they've got new iterations of ideas to how to make the stage work, and, and, and all these concepts. So that process is going forward. No decisions final have been made, and that's going through. So I'll keep you updated on that. The other topics at the CHP meeting were, Gail was giving the final numbers to submit their quarterly report to the city, so she was finalizing that. Numbers were, you know, really up, and they were bringing money in, and so they're, you know, kind of discussing that, and, and how that'll affect what they're doing going forward. Also, what money of what they made is going to be set aside, and, and, and how they can help kind of move forward with the, you know, the process of doing some work on the building. So that discussion happened to some degree. October 23rd, they're hosting an event that I'll be speaking at with members of all the other foundations that have contributed money. That was actually a, an event that we kind of coordinated really around the Lenox Foundation, and the, the grant that we got for the museum from the Lenox Foundation, but actually all the representation of all the other partners and foundations will be at that event. And so that'll be, that's on October 23rd for that, and-
Is that open to?
I think, no, I don't think it is. It's just really kind of a, it's, I'm sure that you probably go as the commissioner. It's mainly for those foundations and thanking them. I could check on that for you.
Okay.
So I think that's really exciting, to see what's going on there. They've done a lot of great work at the Interpretive Center. The other thing I wanted to say was, on top of all the other things going on Friday, the library movie, and the dinner, and fireworks, right, on the river Friday night. It's also homecoming, which means Homecoming Parade down Lynn Avenue, I believe, from Gardner to the high school, the old high school. And that Homecoming Parade starts at Gardner at 5:30. So if you're trying to get to anywhere else in the city, try to do it before. Actually, it's not that bad anymore with, with Lynn Avenue, but it, it does affect Molal a little bit as they cross over. Game starts at 7:00 at the stadium, and our homecoming games against Grant High School.
Oh, no.
Oh, wow.
There's an old grapevine.
Me, too.
My husband, too, yeah.
Yeah, so Grant High School, that should be a big game. The other game that we are all talking about, of course, is next week. Thursday next week is the Westland Oregon City game for the 93rd year. Tuesday morning is the Oregon City/Westland Breakfast. And let's see, oh, on Saturday at noon, I'll be down at the, there's a lot of events going on, but Saturday at noon is the dedication of the sculpture at Clackamas Park, and the new entryway there, which is, I didn't know there was going to be more coming, other than the sculpture, and I heard about that in the last couple of weeks, and it's beautiful. If you go by the park, and I think the, I was talking to Britt Tucker, I think the roof on the, 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 the construction class built the structure, the kiosk in the RV Park area, and, and so it's still not complete, but it should have a roof on it by the opening, and then they're still working on signage for that, too, which is going to be neat to see. And on a personal note, I'm also, I've been working extremely hard. October is one of my busiest months, just because of school and all, and, and Halloween, a holiday called Halloween. And so not only have I been doing tours, but I'm a member of the Milwaukee Elks Lodge, and I, since last year, have been one in charge of basically their biggest fundraiser of the year, which is a gigantic haunted house, which opens October 11th, and runs 13 nights through Halloween. Last year, it made the Milwaukee Elks $26,000, so-
That's great.
Be doing that. Invite you to come. I will be gentle. I will try not to scare you too bad.
(laughing)
That's it.
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, a lot of things were covered. Does staff want to add anything to our report?
(laughing)
There ain't nothing? Let's go home.